Good evening, Cerritos residents and the members of our community. I would like to call to order the Thursday, August 28, 2025, 7 o'clock PM, City Council Successor Agency Regular Meeting. The invocation will be given by Bishop David Montgomery of Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints, and the pledge will be led by Girl Scout Troop 313. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Bishop Montgomery.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we are truly grateful that we have this opportunity to come tonight at this City Council meeting. We are grateful for this wonderful democracy in which we live in. We are grateful here at the local level that through that democracy that we enjoy as a nation, we also have the privilege of voting individuals in to represent us on the City Council, where decisions are made at meetings like this that are for the good and welfare of the citizens of our community. We pray that thou grant them with wisdom as they study the issues, and grant them that they might always be able to keep on the top of their minds what is good and what is best for the citizens of Cerritos. Bless them that they might be able to make wise choices to keep our city, one of the top cities in the whole country. We are grateful for the many programs, for our schools. We pray that thou bless our schools, that they might be a place of safety, that a place of learning, and a place where our young people grow up to be good citizens. We pray a blessing upon our first responders as they meet danger head-on, that they might be protected, that they might continue to be able to keep us safe. We pray that thou will bless those that are sick or infirm, that they might have thy blessings upon them, and bless the families that are in need of blessings for mourning or for other reasons, that they might be comforted. Bless those that stand in need. We are grateful again for all of our blessings, and we say these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Put your right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and indivisible, and eternal.
Great job, great job, Girl Scout Troop 313. Could we please hear from you guys, your names, and what grade you are and what school you go to, please?
My name is Cora, I'm nine years old and I go to Stowers Elementary.
My name is Zoe and I'm five years old and I go to the same school as my sister.
Uh, my name is Abby, I'm 10 years old and I go to Highland Oaks Elementary.
Great, thank you, City Council colleagues. Let's take a photo, please, with Girl Scout Troop 313. Can you please join us over there to take a photo?
So cute.
Does this work?
That's perfect. Right over everybody. On three, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three. Couple more, please, one, two, three, one, two, three, and one more, one, two, and three.
Thank you so much.
Madam City Clerk, will you please conduct the roll call?
Council and Agency Member Hong?
Present.
Council and Agency Member Polito?
Present.
Council and Agency Members Say?
Present.
Mayor Protem and Vice Chair Johnson?
Present.
Mayor and Chair Yokuyama?
Here.
All right, Mayor and members of the City Council, before we move to the next item on the agenda, presentations, I do have a request to amend the agenda to include an item that was not included previously. Under Government Code Section 549, 54.2, there is an opportunity to move something onto the agenda that was not posted before if the matter had arisen after the agenda was posted, and that there is an immediate need to discuss the item before the next council meeting. This matter arose within the time period after the agenda was posted, and we do need to take action regarding this item of potential litigation before the matter may be discussed at the next council meeting on September 8. And so with your request, and also you need to move and make the findings that those two requirements are met. Once you determine that this item did arise after the agenda posting and that there is an immediate need to take action, we can place that item of potential litigation onto the closed session agenda. So right now, I would request that a council member make the motion, and someone second, and we can vote on that determination.
Want to make it?
Yes, I moved out, we...
Your motion would be to move an item of potential litigation onto the closed session agenda based on the determination that there is an immediate need to take action, and that the item arose after the agenda was posted.
Yes, moved to approve, would that be then 12C?
Yes, it would.
I second it.
Okay, let's vote.
The motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
Thank you.
The next item is 5A Presentations. First, I wanted to say that earlier this afternoon, my City Council colleagues and I gathered at the Cerritos Sculpture Garden with city staff to offer our condolences to the families of the 82 people who lost their lives during a midair collision in our city on August 31, 1986. The granite memorial inside the Cerritos Sculpture Garden, where we placed a wreath earlier this afternoon, honors the 67 people aboard the two planes, along with 15 people on the ground in our city of Cerritos who died. This site was dedicated to symbolize the comfort and serenity that we wish for those who lost loved ones on that fateful day. My City Council colleagues and I offer our deepest sympathies to those impacted by this tragedy, by this tragedy. At this time, I invite all of us to join in a moment of silence. Thank you again for being with us, the Cerritos City Council, to share in this remembrance. The Cerritos City Council will be making a presentation today for the Business Spotlight, Trader Joe's. Trader Joe's Representatives, could you please come up? Business Spotlight, Trader Joe's. Trader Joe's began operating in 1967 in the Los Angeles area and has since expanded to over 580 grocery stores nationwide. Trader Joe's is a national chain of neighborhood grocery stores committed to providing customers with high-quality products at competitive prices with a welcoming shopping experience. From specialty Trader Joe's branded foods and beverage items to daily staples, Trader Joe's offers a wide selection of both domestic and imported products, all of which have been approved by Trader Joe's tasting panel. As a neighborhood grocery store, each Trader Joe's location, including the Cerritos store in the Cerritos Town Center, donates over 100% of unsold, I'm sorry, donates 100% of unsold products to a wide range of food banks and food recovery agencies. Trader Joe's and Cerritos opened its doors in 2000 and is celebrating 25 years as a neighborhood grocery store in Cerritos. Trader Joe's is happy to be part of the Cerritos community and proud to offer unique products and an exceptional shopping experience every day. And like I said, Trader Joe's Cerritos is located in the Cerritos Town Center, and they are open from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, seven days a week. And today, we have from Trader Joe's Esteban and Daniel. And I'm going to offer you the mic, Esteban and Daniel, if you'd like to share some words with us about today's Business Spotlight recipient, Trader Joe's.
Yeah, my name is Esteban, I'm here to represent our Cerritos location. On behalf of myself and Daniel, the rest of the store, I want to say thank you for having us, thank you for the recognition. Yeah, we've been open for 25 years. I, myself, have been at this store for about to be 15 years next month. It's a great company to work for, like he, like the mayor read. All our products are handpicked, tasted before they come to our stores. So it's a great, great company. I recognize a couple of faces, which is looking forward to seeing the rest of you come in there, and we're here to help whatever you need. Thank you, thanks again.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Daniel. I'm here in behalf of Trader Joe's Cerritos. I've been at the Trader Joe's Cerritos store now for about just over a year. Been around a long time, worked at different cities. It's a pleasure working here at Cerritos, I can see all the wonderful work you guys all do. Thank you very much for having us, and we look forward to seeing you guys. Thank you.
Okay, so what is the best time to come and get the Trader Joe tote bags?
Depends on who you ask, and depends how bad you want them. People start lighting up at 4:00 AM. We open at 8:00 AM, so they're in line for four hours before we open. It just depends how bad you want them.
We have a great, hard-working city of Cerritos staff here, and whatever you can do to help them get the Trader Joe tote bags would mean a lot to the City Council. So, we're gonna... We are, because Trader Joe's, 25 years in Cerritos Business Spotlight, we're honored, the Cerritos City Council is honored to present Trader Joe's with the City of Cerritos Proclamation, Trader Joe's, 25 years in Cerritos. And City Council colleagues, can you please come up and join me in a photo?
Right over everybody, on three, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three. Couple more, please, one, two, three, one, two, three, and one more, one, two, and three.
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys, appreciate it.
He was serious enough.
Thanks for having us. An honor to be here, thank you very much.
Come find me.
Thank you so much, thank you.
The next item is 5B City Manager. Do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you. For the item 5B, I'll defer to City Clerk Cindy Nava.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. The item before you is consideration of City Council nominations for resident appointment for service on the city's advisory boards. There are currently two vacancies, both on the Economic Development Commission, or EDC. EDC meetings are tentatively scheduled to begin Tuesday, September 9. Applications for service are available on the city's website.
Excuse me, City Clerk, are any of my council colleagues going to make an appointment tonight? Okay, please continue.
Applications for service are available on the city's website and in the City Clerk's office, and will be accepted until all positions are filled. It is now recommended the City Council open public comment on this item and nominate individuals from the eligible pool of applicants to serve two-year terms for open advisory board seats subject to the city charter anti-nepotism law and majority approval of the City Council. The City Council may also defer nominations to a future meeting date or provide alternate direction. For appointments made this evening, I will administer the oath of office to any appointees in attendance at the appropriate time. This concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions the City Council may have.
Thank you for that report, City Clerk Cindy Nava. Councilmember Polito? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to nominate to the Economic Development Commission, Mr. Aristagle. A little bit about Eris. Aristagle and his family first moved to Cerritos in 1978, when his parents had the wisdom and foresight to purchase a home across from cow pastures that were on the side of what is now the Cerritos Town Center. Economic and community development eventually led to that smell from cattle fading away and being replaced by the bustling community that is Cerritos today. Should Eris be fortunate enough to be appointed by the City Council tonight, Eris welcomes the opportunity to contribute his knowledge and experience to the economic growth of Cerritos for the present and future. Eris is a proud Cerritos resident and graduate of ABC Schools, having attended Whitman Elementary School and then graduating from Whitney High School. Eris went on to earn a bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering from UCLA and an MBA from the Yale University School of Management. Eris has forged a distinguished career as a marketing and business leader with over two decades of experience in media, marketing, and advertising, having achieved senior leadership roles on both the client and agency sides for blue-chip global brands. He currently serves as Vice President of Analytics at Publicis Media, one of the largest global communications and advertising groups by revenue in the world. He has served as the analytics team lead for multiple recent clients, including Disney, Hulu, National Geographic, and TD Bank. He has also driven successful results across a wide variety of past clients, including Lexus, Pimco Investments, Wilson Sporting Goods, Jacuzzi, Cathay Pacific Airlines, and Sheraton. On the client side, Eris has also worked in business development, product management, and analytics with global brands such as AT&amp;T, Guthrie Ranker, and Herbalife. He has worked alongside media teams to deploy, measure, and optimize digital media campaigns of all types, including programmatic, paid, and organic search, social media, video, connected TV, email, mobile, as well as traditional media campaigns in TV and print. Eris is also passionate about applying his experience to serving the community through volunteer roles in nonprofit boards. While at UCLA, he was elected president of the UCLA Summer Hong Filipino Student Advocacy Group, and as an alumnus, served as Chair of the Filipino Alumni Association. He then had the honor of being elected as the Chair of the UCLA Alumni Association Board of Directors, a board he served for four years. He also volunteers as an alumni admissions ambassador for the Yale School of Management, served as a middle school mentor for the Spark Program in Los Angeles, and is an active volunteer for the Los Angeles Sports and Entertainment Council, working as a volunteer for fundraisers benefiting the community foundations of the Dodgers, Lakers, and other Southern California organizations. In Cerritos, he has volunteered as a youth soccer coach for both the City of Cerritos Summer League and the AYSO Region 54 Fall League. He's an active parent volunteer at his son's school, Kennedy STEM Academy, and has presented to students at the annual Career Day and Community Read aloud events. Eris would be very honored if granted the opportunity to serve his hometown, the great City of Cerritos, through the Economic Development Commission. And I just want to add on a personal note, ever since I was first elected to the City Council in 2011, I've been trying to encourage Eris to step up, and tonight he has, and I'm honored that he's here, along with his wife, his son, and his father. Mr. Mayor, Council colleagues, I hope you'll join in with me in appointing Aristagle to the Economic Development Commission of the City of Cerritos. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Polito. I will now open this item for public comments. Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back. I will close the public comment period, and I'll bring it back to the City Council. Does the City Council have any nominations for appointment this evening? Does the City Council have any nominations for appointment this evening?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Ms., go ahead, Councilmember Polito.
I nominate Eris Tagle for the Economic Development Commission.
I second that.
Thank you.
Was moved by Councilmember Polito and seconded by myself. Let's vote.
The motion passes five to zero.
Congratulations. Mr. Tagle, City Clerk, can you please...
City clerk, can you please do the oath? Mr. Tagle, can you please come up? Councilmember Palito, would you like to join them?
Congratulations. I'm going to say, tell you to say aye and state your name, and then I'll just read the oath that you can say aye to. Please raise your right hand and say aye and state your name.
Aye, Eris Tagle.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
I do.
Right here on three. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Couple more, please. One, two...
Okay, thank you, city clerk. And council colleague, let's join, council colleagues, let's join them for a group photo.
Right over here, everybody on three. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Couple more, please. One, two, three. One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three.
Eris, why don't you have your family come down and let us know who's here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Yeah, joining here, me, here for the photo is my beautiful wife, Cher. My son Cristiano, third grade. My dad, again, who, he was the one who had the foresight to purchase a home in 1978. Here to celebrate with us today, so. Fred Tagle is here.
Right over here, please. On three. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Couple more, please. One, two, three. One, two, three. And one more. One, two, and three. Thank you.
Okay, item 5C, Mayor's Annual Appointments. I ask for council consensus to defer this item to the next city council meeting.
Concur.
Thank you. Item six, Public Comments. Thank you for your attendance at tonight's meeting. State law and our local rules do not support the use of profanity, hateful speech, or activity that disrupts the conduct of this city business meeting. If necessary, I will issue an initial warning and call for a recess to restore order. After that, the chamber may be cleared if disruption continues. The following comments pertain to all public comments at the appropriate times on the agenda. Please be prepared to approach the podium and begin your comments at the time you are called. Public comments should be directed to the city council and made only from the podium during your turn. Please respect each speaker and refrain from any disruptive behavior or speech during your comment time. Public comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Agenda item six, Public Comments, should be limited to items on the consent calendar, closed session, and items not listed on the agenda but that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. Prior to tonight's meeting, the city council received full text, unredacted copies of the four written comments submitted by the deadline for item six. Requests for copies of written comments can be made to the office of the city clerk during regular business hours. I will now open for item six, Public Comments. David Pyelman. Hello, Mr. Pyelman.
Mr. Mayor, based on the fact that I regularly prepare my comments before the meeting, if Mrs. Troxel is on your list, I would appreciate being able to speak after she speaks.
Okay, why don't you sit down then? Linda Troxel. Ryan, can you please adjust the microphone as necessary, please, and help Ms. Troxel with the microphone, please?
Again, you, Linda Troxel. My address, 19118 Stephanie Avenue in Cerritos. Help poison out when the popcorn ceiling containing asbestos dropped to the floor while being repaired, being fixed by Stevens Environmental. Dropped poison, me, my health, and all of the contents. Over seven years ago, haven't been able to get anyone to come finally fix it. Had to finally contact you, the mayor here, the mayor before. The Ryan Carey refused to help me with that, so. And the, and so the, and so now, and... Ryan Carey has refused to help me through the building department since nineteen, for many, many months now, and consequently poisoned out of my house. House is vacant, vacant now over seven years. And finally sent all of the information to you. All of the information from the certified contractor that can fix it, but need to have somebody inform AAA that this repair are required. And needed you to finally step up to the plate and contact them immediately. Poisoned out seven years. Been in a shelter because of this. And so now, easy enough for you to contact AAA. The home is a toxic mess. Then see also the information to Jennifer. But, and also, also broke, broke, broke. No money at all. Everybody refuses to help. And so find you figure out a way to find something from a special fund to give me some money for the time being. I'm at assisted living in Chatsworth. Sent all of the information to you. You know, you know that the home needs to be fixed. And so now I need, what can you do for me? You personally need to do something immediately. Poisoned out. I sent all of the information. What can you do? Frank, Frank, Frank. That all of the information to you. All of the pertinent information. And you contacted me via text and a couple of texts and only one phone call. So now I need money, money, money immediately. What can you do? What can you do? Frank, you got all of the information. What can you do? You can't, can't you, ma? Frank, you got all of the information. Can you contact AAA for me? You got all of the information. Can you contact AAA for me? Why not? Talk to me.
Troxel, your time is up. The City of Cerritos has heard from you, and the city council has... The city has responded to you. Thank you for coming for public comment. This is a time for the public to give comments to the city council. Thank you, Ms. Troxel.
My home is poisoned. My home, I was in a shelter now. And so I need you to finally show, finally show some cure, courage, humanity. Contact AAA for me. Easy enough for you to do. So do that now.
Thank you, Ms. Troxel. We have received your public comment. Thank you, Ms. Troxel.
I got your cards here, okay? Here you go.
Need you to contact AAA for me. That's a human, any, anyone would do that. Anyone would do that.
Thank you, Ms. Troxel. Your five minutes has ended. Thank you. Case Vanderlinden?
Good evening. Case Vanderlinden. Citizen since 1971. That makes 54 years in this city. Perhaps none of you were that long over here. I'm a witness in some sad situations. I cannot comment because I don't know the story behind it. But I can tell you one thing. This business about racing or water race is totally unacceptable. If you guys are looking for revenue, you gotta look in your own back door. This performance arts building has been a sore issue for many, many years. It costs you a lot of money, yet it's a dance and a song, and nothing is being done. I certainly would recommend that this council steps up and do, make the right decisions. I'm also not very keen about this meddling right now with the metro to make it now go perhaps to the county line. That piece runs right behind me. I'm looking at that rail. So I'd be very unhappy if that becomes an issue again, because I've worked very hard in 19 to get everybody involved and on the same page. And at which time, it was not going to go to the City of Cerritos. Now, all of a sudden, I hear vibes that Israel gonna go to the City of Cerritos. Maybe I won't be around by that time, because it certainly doesn't happen overnight. But I'm not very happy with everything that goes on over here. It's hit and miss. Things got changed. This whole business right now of the zoning change, that's pathetic. You guys see what's happening on Pioneer with the rerouting of the sewers? It's in your city. It is a mess. And you think that you put more homes over there, that's not going to be a problem? I have not seen follow-up on the regular flushing of the sewers. It's not happening. And believe you me, I've seen a lot. When you guys started, when I came in this city, you were in trailers. Cerritos High School was not even built. So somewhere on the line, I think you all better step up and quit playing the game, because there's a lot of games being played. And I believe you me, I'm not the only one that don't like it. There's a lot of other people that don't like it. I feel very sorry about this individual that spoke before me. And like I said, I don't know the situation, but I feel for her. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Case Vanderlinden. Mr. Pyelman? If anybody else wants to speak at public comment, item six, please sign in.
Okay, as I said, David Pyelman. As I said, I do prepare my comments before I come to the meeting. I'm gonna go ahead and modify a little bit, but when preparing my oral comments for the August 14th meeting, I had contemplated, beginning with, isn't it fortunate that the council has not been required to deliberate and decide what two words are not permitted during public comment, as the Los Angeles City Council has chosen to do? Then, prior to the actual public comments agenda item, the mayor began the admonitions to the gallery as to what would be verbally allowed during the public comment section. None were more surprised than the mayor pro tem, who attempted to interrupt him. But we soon realized why he felt those instructions were prudent to deliver early. What then transpired was unfortunate, again, tonight, was unfortunate, with, who is apparently a past Cerritos resident, but tonight we were given a Cerritos address, accosting a member of the council for incorrect familial relationship to a purported former landlord of the speaker. For those of us who did not grasp the background information, it was a low spot in the proceedings. But what can we learn from this experience and tonight's experience? What action might we take to make these diatribes less likely? I think I have made it clear that I did not agree with the past council's attempts to add and detract from the city's commissions and committees. Let me be clear. I was not opposed to the discussion and clarification of the protocols and functions of the commissions during my comments to the council and commissions during the summer of 2024. I was just opposed to Mr. Barrows' apparent motivations. But maybe Mr. Barrows did have one suggestion that we should revisit. I believe a senior services commission, or a disability advisory committee, or a geriatric advocacy group, as it was proposed, might have been a positive step within a group of unsavory proposals. As our population grays in structure, it might be prudent to provide some level of additional input for these residents. Whether the August 14th speaker's comments or tonight were appropriate or valid, maybe another forum where individuals could be heard would make our city better. Thank you. maybe another forum where individuals could be heard would make our city better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palman. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. The next item is the consent calendar. Do my, do my city council colleagues
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Have a motion.
Second.
Yeah, I, I heard a motion to approve the consent calendar and a second by council member say, let's vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Item eight, public hearings. There are no public hearings scheduled for tonight's meeting. I am asking for consensus from my council colleagues to next here. Item nine B, review and consideration of a request for the installation and naming of a park bench located within Friendship Park in memory of a Cerritos resident. Do I have consensus?
I concur.
Mayor?
Uh, council member Hong.
Yes, uh, since I live by Friendship Park within 500 feet, I would like to recuse myself from this agenda meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, council member Kong. So council member Hong, thank you, council member Hong. So I heard that I have consensus from my council colleagues to next here, item nine B. And council member Hong is recusing herself because she lives within 500 feet of Friendship Park. So, item nine B. City manager, do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Item nine B is in response to a request that our office received directed to the city council as it relates to a possible renaming of a city facility. The overview of this item will be given by Deputy City Manager Ryan Carey. And following his presentation, he and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Robert. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, the item before you this evening is the review of a request submitted by Ms. Courtney Bankhead for the installation and dedication of a bench in Friendship Park in memory of her late sister Chelsea. The request was submitted in accordance with the city's naming and renaming of city's policy, which is included as part of the city's policy and procedure manual. The policy provides guidelines for naming various city facilities. At the discretion of the city councils, city council facilities may be named in honor of individuals who have made a meaningful impact on the community provided at least one year has passed since their passing. Ms. Bankhead's request, which is included as an exhibit to the staff report, highlights Chelsea's positive presence in the community through her daily visits to the park and the way she inspired others with her resilience, optimism, and strength in the face of the physical challenges she was working through. Ms. Bankhead's request also emphasizes the family's longstanding connection to Friendship Park and the important role it continues to play in their lives. This evening, staff is seeking the council's direction on how to proceed with this request based on the options outlined in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to take any questions. I'd also like to note that Ms. Bankhead is here with us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan Carey. Do we have any questions from the council? Council member say? Council member, council member Polito? Mayor Pro Tem Johnson? I will now open for public comments on this item. Courtney Bankhead.
Good evening, Mayor Yokoyama, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, and council members. Um, my name is Courtney Bankhead and I am here tonight to ask for your support in approving the request before you to install and name a commemorative bench in Friendship Park in honor of my twin sister Chelsea. Um, I've been coming to many of these meetings for the past two and a half years, um, always with the hope that the city would recognize one of its own who, for nearly three decades of her life, showed up at Friendship Park every single day. To me, that is one of the purest expressions of civic, civic life, embracing and making use of the public spaces that our city has built for its people. Chelsea was nonverbal, autistic, and later nonambulatory, but that never stopped her from living fully and joyfully. From the time my family moved into our home in 1991 until Chelsea's passing in 2023, Friendship Park was her sanctuary. Whether she was walking, being pushed around the lap course, or simply watching kids play soccer and families gather, the park gave Chelsea and my family a sense of belonging and connection that no other place could. Over the years, she became part of the fabric of that community and in turn, the community learned something from Chelsea. That courage and joy can exist even in the face of enormous challenges. Our family previously participated in the city's memorial tree program, which I just want to say thank you very much. Uh, and there is already a tree planted in her honor at Friendship Park. But the tree is unmarked and without a plaque, there is no way for others to understand the significance of her presence in this space. A bench with her name would not only give our family a place to sit and remember her, but also serve as a visible reminder to the broader community of what this park meant to one of its community members. As your staff report notes, policy 7.06 allows for dedications like benches to honor individuals who have made a meaningful contribution to our community. I believe Chelsea did exactly that, not through wealth or office, but through presence. Through her daily joyful use of Friendship Park, she showed what it means to be deeply connected to this city. I respectfully ask the council to recognize Chelsea by approving this request and to allow the city to install and name a bench in her memory at Friendship Park. And while the existing policy does not specify whether the applicant or the city bears the associated costs, I want to emphasize that I am willing to work with the city on this matter and would be open to finding a fair middle ground. This recognition would mean so much to me, to my family, and it would also ensure that Chelsea's spirit of connection, courage, and joy continues to live on here. Thank you very much.
Erin Bankhead.
Hi, uh, good evening, everyone. Um, thank you for having us tonight to speak on this matter, uh, the entire city council and especially the mayor. Um, I want to begin by just showing my appreciation and gratitude for the uh, memorial tree planting that we were able to have last year. So, uh, we definitely appreciate that. On tonight, the request for the memorial bench for Chelsea, um, I just want to really emphasize and reiterate that, um, from the moment that Chelsea was born, she was my younger sister by five years. Um, she experienced many physical and mental challenges over the years. Um, but something that brought her great joy was the ability to be outside and to be with people and in open spaces. Something that brought her a lot of joy was also being able to go to Friendship Park. Uh, we were able to find that park and the fact that it was a pocket park really meant a lot to us because it was enclosed and it was safe, surrounded by homes. We spent many days there at Friendship Park. Chelsea would never want to leave. Um, as her health over the years started to decline, we were able to push her through her wheelchair around the park. Um, and she was actually able to experience a lot of joy there. So on tonight, uh, the hope is just that, like Courtney said, we are able to be granted approval for a memorial bench, um, so that we can have a place that we can commemorate her and her memory, um, and then also show others that, um, Cerritos is just a great place to be and a great place to live. Thank you.
Allison Sutherland.
Good evening, council members. Thank you so much for welcoming us to speak on behalf of Chelsea. Cerritos has always been home for my family. My grandparents bought their first home here in 1970 off of Draxford Street behind the bowling alley. Both my parents grew up in Cerritos, went to Stowers, Carmonita Junior High, and Cerritos High. And they currently live in my father's childhood home off of Coro Place. My dad often reminisces on when he remembers half of Friendship Park was a feedlot for the cows. During college, I worked at Wood Ranch and I still do all of my shopping at the town center. My family loves Cerritos. My, for my family, Friendship Park has always been a place where generations gathered, connected, and built memories. For Chelsea, it was a place of freedom and fun. Being autistic, nonverbal, and in a wheelchair, her daily outings to Friendship Park brightened her day. That's why this request carries so much meaning. I stand here alongside my friend Courtney and others who are not asking for sympathy but are asking for a way to honor her life in the city she loves. A bench in Chelsea's memory would be a symbol of resilience, love, and community. So on behalf of those who love Chelsea and the entire Bankhead family, I want to thank you for your time and consideration.
Stephanie Iwan. Stephanie Iwan or Iwan? Stephanie Iwan.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Stephanie Iwan and I'm here on behalf of many who loved and cherished a remarkable member of our community, Chelsea Bankhead. I'll never forget the day Courtney and I first met, walking home from school together. We may have walked a similar path home, but I quickly realized our lives at home were quite different. Courtney, Courtney's mother passed away of breast cancer when she was in grade school. Her twin sister Chelsea was born with significant medical challenges and spent much of her life in and out of the hospital. Their father, Arthur, a widower of many years at that point, led their family with incredible grace and resilience, always trying to find the good in every situation and give everything he had to ensure the best upbringing for Courtney and her siblings. Sadly, Arthur passed away a few years ago and not long after Chelsea joined him in heaven. I share this because I know that everyone in this room has someone they love, a child, a parent, a sibling, or a guardian, someone you'd be here honoring if you were in Courtney's shoes. Courtney now only has her brother with her here in the physical world. So we stand here today alongside Courtney as her extended family and to advocate for something deeply meaningful, a bench in memory of her beloved half, Chelsea. Chelsea was nonverbal, but her presence spoke volumes. She touched hearts and made an undeniable impact on this community. A bench may seem simple, just a place to sit, but we believe it would be so much more. A space for friends to gather, a spot for strangers to pause and rest, a quiet place for reflection. A symbol of how one life, even a life lived without words, could make a community feel connected, kinder, and inclusive. Thank you for your time for listening and for considering this request.
Danielle Vella.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Danielle Vella and I am speaking as a longtime friend of Courtney Bankhead and her late sister Chelsea Bankhead. I grew up here in this community and played softball in the city for about 12 years. These parks were a huge part of my childhood. Now I live in Irvine where I play in an adult softball league. Recently, actually, just this week, I noticed a commemorative bench in one of Irvine's park dedicated and it stated, "In memory of Coach Bill Haslett, it's a great day for baseball." And it didn't make the park feel like a graveyard at all. Instead, it added warmth and connection. Families were playing, children were laughing, and the bench quietly honored someone who had left a mark on this community. I share this today because I am here to support my friend Courtney in honoring her late sister Chelsea. Chelsea was nonverbal, autistic, and used a wheelchair, but she found joy and freedom every single day by being walked around her favorite park here in Cerritos. For Chelsea, this wasn't just a park, it was her sanctuary. Policy 7.06 establishes guidelines for naming facilities, including benches, in honor of individuals who made meritorious contributions, contributions to Cerritos. As a teacher of eight years, I want to speak to the word meritorious. I work with both general education and special education students daily. And I see firsthand that merit comes in many different forms. If we only measure it by public achievements, we risk overlooking the quiet but equally powerful contributions of people with disabilities, and that is not equitable. Chelsea's life was meritorious in her own way. She embodied resilience, inclusion, and community. Her daily presence at this park was a reminder that public spaces belong to all of us and her story reflects the best of what our parks represent. I understand that the concern of commemorative benches could make parks feel somber, but my experience in Irvine shows the opposite. These benches celebrate lives, enrich the park's history, and bring a sense of belonging without taking away from the joy of the space. A bench in Courtney's honor would not turn this park into a graveyard. It would, it would serve as a symbol of love, accessibility, and equity. And it would show that Cerritos values all contributions, both big and small, public and private. I respectfully urge you to consider allowing this bench. It would be, it would bring comfort to Chelsea's family and friends. And it would send a powerful message that Cerritos leads with compassion, inclusivity, and equity. Thank you.
Jan White.
Hi, I'm sorry I don't have prepared comments because I wasn't prepared to comment. But when we began this meeting with the fact that you all went today to honor people who died in this city, who weren't attached to this city, but it became attached to the city by the tragedy that happened that day. We memorialize things for that reason. And then I sat watching as each person came up and you made sure the photographer memorialized things that might not seem important to everyone but were important in the day of the life of those Girl Scouts and in the life of that family. This is important in the life of the Bankhead family. I'm their older cousin. I have watched what this family has gone through in this community. That park is a special place to them. And just like you memorialize things for Girl Scouts and you memorialize things for airline victims, we can memorialize for this family and for Chelsea. It is a plaque on a bench for reflection, like a wreath at a sculpture garden. The same. Thank you.
Are there, are there any other speakers on this item? City clerk? Please announce for the record the written comments received for this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Prior to the meeting, the city council received full text, unredacted copies of the three written comments submitted by the deadline for item nine B. Requests for copies of written comments can be made to the office of the city clerk with, during regular business hours.
If there are no additional speakers, I will close the public comment period. Do my council colleagues have any additional questions or comments? Council member say? Council member Polito?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of comments and then, um, at the appropriate time, I like to make a motion. I just wanted to say thank you to all the family and friends of Ms. Bankhead. It's been quite some time that I, I've heard at the podium such loving remembrances of a loved one, a friend who had given so much to our local community, our beloved hometown. In a truly unsung way. So much of what we celebrate and recognize here in this chamber is oftentimes big and loud and exciting. But what she shared with us of Chelsea's life, what she did and what she contributed to this thing called community in her own way is pretty profound. And so you've captured my attention and my imagination. And so you've captured my attention and my imagination and my support. That's all I have to say right now. I think I'm just more overcome by kind of the feeling that you've given to me and perhaps my colleagues. Mr. Mayor, at the appropriate time, I'd like to make a motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Johnson? Thank you. Thank you, Ryan Carey, for bringing this agenda report to the council. Thank you, Courtney, for your perseverance. So I had a talk with, I've talked about this subject with the city attorney about city council policies, city council procedures, policies, Cerritos ordinances, the city charter, and it's up to the city of Cerritos to write, prepare the charter provisions, the Cerritos city ordinances, to say exactly what the city means in the city charter provisions and in the city council ordinances, in the Cerritos, city of Cerritos ordinances, the city of Cerritos charter, city of Cerritos city council procedures. We have the ability to do a good job, take our time, and write things the way so that they mean exactly, clearly, transparently, and what they mean and what the city council's intention is when they pass those sections or provisions, or when we put it before the residents, the residents know exactly what they're voting to approve. So regarding the fiscal impact, it talks about what the existing policy does not address. Okay, so if the city council wanted to address things like the allocation of costs, they should have addressed it. It should have been addressed. So the any ambiguity, anything that's unclear should be interpreted against the party who wrote it. So since the city council and the city wrote this policy, that means since the allocation of costs was not addressed, that means the city of Cerritos assumes the costs under the policy. And we've assumed these costs in the past, in their entirety. So that's how this policy is interpreted in the past, and I'm surprised that we're saying that the existing policy does not address the allocation of costs because when this policy was used previously while I've been on the city council to, for example, name a park, change the name of a park, the city of Cerritos paid for the entire cost, isn't that correct, city manager?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. So that's the precedent. The city of Cerritos pays for all the costs under this policy. So I need to say it more clearly. Thank you, Courtney, for your perseverance. Councilmember Palito, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion to approve the submitted requests and direct staff to work with Ms. Courtney Bankhead to facilitate the installation and naming of the requested bench with the associated costs covered by the city of Cerritos. Thank you.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Let's vote.
I have a question before we vote.
Councilmember Say?
My consideration is, you know, definitely that I really feel bad. I feel sorry, you know? And as a nurse, I am deeply sympathetic for this. However, as the elected official, I have to look other side of the city point of view. The budgeting things, maintenance, what's going to happen for the long-term run? And I really deeply do consider that cost to the city. You know, if there's no certain regulation there, we promise one, then we're going to promise another one, and going to be more comes out. That a concern about the rule and the regulation. And since the city has planted a memorial tree already one time to memorize of Courtney. And I remember one of my friends also, you probably don't remember her anymore, Maria, also being recognized, and the tree was planted just for her. And so I do have a question about passing to support this one. And this, my question's about this, the maintenance, future things, the cost to the city, and right now we are running a red. And one by one, it's going to get more costs. What is my other duty is about? I got to oversee the budget. We have so many things going on in the city. So that just my, contribute my thought. Thank you, sir.
The motion does not pass on a vote of two to two with one abstention, one recusal.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a subsequent motion?
Yes, Councilmember Palito, you can make a different motion. You cannot make the same motion.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the submitted requests and direct staff to work with Ms. Courtney Bankhead to facilitate the installation and naming of the requested bench in honor of her sister Chelsea Bankhead, with the associated costs to be covered by the applicant. And I just want to add on, and I'd like to personally encourage those who support this to make appropriate contributions towards this cause. You count on mine. Thank you.
For clarification, when Councilmember Mr. Palito, when you mentioned about the applicants will be oversee the charges, is that right? Is that what you say here?
Staff work with the applicant.
The applicant, and they'll work the cost.
And the cost to be borne by the applicant.
The applicant. What about the future maintenance? I mean, this is not just going to be, the chair's going to be there a while, and we can see some of the area that have this kind of chair, especially by the, some area. And I know, I studied that too, I know, I think.
Councilmember Say, there's benches in the park, and the city takes care of the benches in the park.
So that is additional cost to the city too, right?
This bench will, the bench that the applicant is asking for is requesting under established policy is asking for the park to indicate a remembrance of Chelsea Bankhead. Whether or not she's remembered on this bench, that bench is there, and it's the city's responsibility to take care of that, and all of the benches in all of our parks today and in the future. Mayor Protem Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a city policy on the naming and renaming of city facilities. I want to thank the family and friends that came out to speak tonight and for taking the time to come here. I know some of you have been here in the past, and I appreciate that you have been advocating for your sister. And I'm also pleased to hear that the family has participated in the city's memorial tree planting program, and hope that you'll have many years to enjoy that. However, our policy, 7.06.020, under Policy Directive, Section C, it does indicate that the name of the individual be considered only if such individual has made a particularly meritorious and outstanding contribution to the city. Now I realize one of the speakers did say, you know, meritorious can be subjective. However, I think we knew what the spirit of that policy had meant at the time it was developed, and so that is why I had vote and will vote to oppose this and because we do have other means of recognizing our loved ones, which is through the Memorial Tree Program. Thank you.
Once again, so the family will work with the city. But the cost not on the city. Is what the, am I clear?
I'm hearing yes from them, but Councilmember Palito made that a requirement of his motion. So under his motion, the applicant bears the cost, not the city. So anything related to the installation and naming of a park bench in memory of Cerritos, former Cerritos resident Chelsea Bankhead, who passed away in 2023, the costs are the responsibility of the applicant and not the city of Cerritos.
Well, what else I can say? Okay. Should we just go vote? You need a second?
Need a second.
I'll vote for a second.
Okay, let's vote.
The motion passes on a vote of three to one.
Ryan, thank you for bringing this agenda report. Can you please congratulate the Bankhead family and talk with Courtney for a moment and tell her about the next steps? Can someone please tell Councilmember Hong that she can come out, please? Let's take a two-minute break. That's not realistic. Let's make a five-minute break. The next item is 9A. City manager, do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the City Council. Item 9A follows up on a previous request by the City Council to look at the potential change to our water and sewer rates. The item this evening, under 9A, deals specifically with sewer rates. The presentation will be given by Assistant Director of Public Works, Chris Cubert, and following his presentation, he and members of the team and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Manager Lopez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Chris Cubert, Assistant Director of Public Works. Tonight's presentation will review the proposed sewer rate scenarios that have been developed by the city's consultant, Water Rate Economics, or WRE. Sewer rates fund operations and maintenance of the city's sewer system. The city sewer system includes over 100 miles of sewer lines, five lift stations, which pump sewage from low elevations to allow sewage to continue to flow, main line cleaning, which helps prevent blockages and sewer spills, and CCTV inspection, in which a camera is sent into a sewer pipe to identify breaks in the pipe and identify necessary repairs. Over the years, sewer rates have been so low, they are not enough to cover expenses. WRE was hired to develop two potential scenario options to help fix our funding problems. We will discuss these two options tonight. In 2023, the City Council wrote off $24.3 million in general fund loans because water rates and sewer rates did not generate enough revenues to pay them back. Staff was directed by the City Council to develop options to come back to the City Council for consideration to prevent this from occurring in the future. Last month, staff presented water rate option scenarios, and tonight we'll be discussing sewer rate option scenarios. Customers are billed for sewer service every two months as part of their water bill, which is based on the amount of water used. The city collects sewage from homes and businesses and sends it to the treatment plant, which is owned by LA County Sanitation Districts. The county cleans up the sewage and turns it into recycled water. Residential and commercial customers pay approximately 3 cents per 100 cubic feet of metered water used. This lower rate has not covered costs of sewer operations and almost always relied heavily on general fund support. Since 2021, we only collected $350,000 from sewer rates, which is not enough and is the small amount highlighted in orange. Because of rates, the sewer fund is required on a significant amount of general fund support in the amount of $5.5 million and is highlighted in the much larger amount highlighted in blue. Over the next five years, the city sewer system will need approximately $12.7 million to cover operations, maintenance, and capital costs. Current sewer rates and miscellaneous revenues are estimated to generate roughly $600,000 during this rate period, leaving a funding gap of approximately $12.1 million. Two rate scenarios are being proposed, which I will get into in future slides. Due to the City Council selecting to move forward with Water Rate Scenario 2B, which phased out general fund over the five-year rate adjustment period, the consultant developed two sewer rate scenarios using the same methodology. As outlined in the table, total general fund support remains the same in both scenarios at $3.6 million, gradually phasing out over the entire five-year period. To address the $12.1 million funding gap, two rate scenarios have been developed. Scenario 1 has a larger increase in year 1 with smaller steady increases in the out years, while Scenario 2 has a smaller increase in year 1 with gradual increases in years 2 through 5. This can be compared to purchasing a car. A large down payment equals lower monthly costs, or a smaller down payment equals larger monthly costs. This slide outlines both sewer rate scenarios developed. In Scenario 1, rates in the first year will increase from 3 cents to 49 cents and at $1.20 per CCF metered water use in year 5. Scenario 2 rates will increase from 3 cents in the first year to 27 cents, ending at $1.36 in year 5. As with water, sewer is charged bimonthly. In Scenario 1, a typical monthly sewer bill will increase by $9.18 or $4.59 per month. Scenario 2 increases $4.70 bimonthly or $2.39 per month. Both of the scenarios' increases represent buying one cup of coffee a month. When comparing Cerritos' current sewer rates to other cities in our region, Cerritos has by far the lowest rates, which does not cover costs to operate and maintain the city's sewer system. No matter what scenario we pick, 1 or 2, Cerritos will still have some of the lowest rates around. When calculating commercial rates, WRE used the same bimonthly sewer bill would increase by $57.36 or $28.68 per month. In Scenario 2, bimonthly bills would increase by $14.89 a month. Reclaimed water is used by the city in commercial accounts for watering of landscaping, medians, and parks. The city is currently in negotiations with LA County Sanitation Districts on an urgent multimillion-dollar safety project to rehabilitate our reclaimed water pumping station. Due to the early stage of negotiations, the city will not be presenting reclaimed water rates at this time. Once there's a better understanding of project costs, the city will complete the reclaimed water rate study and return to council for adoption. Any action taken by City Council tonight will have no immediate fiscal impact, but could result in sewer revenue increases once implemented. As with water rates, staff will evaluate low-income rate options for sewer services, which will be included in the final report. As discussed during the water rate option on July 26, the next steps remain the same with the schedule of open houses in September, final presentation of rates to the City Council on October 27, and the public hearing scheduled for January 22. If approved on January 22, new rates would be implemented on February 1, 2026. A press release was issued yesterday identifying three community open houses, which will be located at the city's corporate yard at 16540 Markort Avenue and the senior center located at 12340 South Street. These meetings are limited to 30 people maximum. Please contact Public Works at 562-916-1220. For more information about water and sewer rates, residents can also visit cerritos.gov/waterrates. In closing, staff recommends the City Council review the proposed rate adjustment scenarios, provide direction to city staff regarding the preferred scenario to be included in the final report, and finalize the sewer rate study report and present the final report for the City Council review on October 27. This concludes my presentation. City Manager Lopez, WRE, and staff are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that report, Chris. And also, thank you to Alvin, Drew Schneider, Peter Kemp, and Sergio Huizar. Do we have any questions from the council? Councilmember Say?
This question is going to be to you, Mr. Lopez, manager. I was wondering why every five years? You know, so I really appreciate that you shared with me Proposition 218. There's some changes there. And however, I also realized what was done really not appropriate in the past year. Because 2014, there were seven years consecutive. But Proposition 218, since 1996, has stated you can only do five-year. But however, they did it seven years. So it's really confusing local residents. Why can't they do seven years now? We cannot do seven years or 10 years now. So I need you to kind of publicly explain to the people what happened to Proposition 218, so people understand why we go five years now for 10 years solely.
Thank you, Councilmember Say and members of the City Council. So, we are required to meet the requirements of Prop 218, and the law over the years has been amended. But, you know, current requirements would apply in this case should the City Council decide to move forward. The current requirement is that the maximum number of years that we can look toward is, I believe, five years. And with that, it is common practice for cities and other agencies subject to Prop 218 to look at their capital needs on a five-year ongoing basis with potentially another Prop 218 process occurring every five or so years. I can defer to City Attorney Pam Lee for additional information related to that.
Sure. Every time you increase or implement a new rate under Proposition 218, it does require an extensive study to justify the cost of the increases. And typically, the way that statistics work and the way data works, it typically would stretch out five to seven years. There are agencies that do seven years. It's not explicitly prevented, so long as there's a study that adequately addresses why the costs are going to increase by that much and are justified by the adequate data. That is why most agencies will do four to five, up to seven. Beyond that, a lot of times it is guesswork because we can't necessarily plan for additional costs and increases. We can expect a certain CPI, but because of the way the markets work, a lot of times there are unanticipated consequences and unforeseen circumstances that come into play. And so that is why we typically have a certain limit in terms of the numbers of years rates do increase. I can also defer to the consultant to answer this question and any of the other questions related to the information as to what justifies a cost increase.
Yeah, I don't feel comfortable because if it's certain... Because Proposition 218 actually kind of stated that every five years, you can always go back again. You know, after five years, you can recall back and do another justification, right?
You can always increase the rate if it's justified by a study. If you've already adopted a five-year increase, and there are unforeseen circumstances, you can, in the middle of that, request additional increases, again, subject to protest hearing under Prop 218. There is another agency that I've worked with that adopted an increase at the beginning of this year all the way up until 2031, based on, you know, bond issuances and repayments. And so as long as the study justifies the amount, that's the way it goes. So this is why we're proposing up to five years.
Another two questions subsidized. Anyway, with the senior 1 and 2 that you presented today, same thing with the water bill? Water? And then we vote for 2B? Is any possible, because we subsidize a lot of things, does that include the subsidies or not at all? Just totally local, universal needs, they pay their own?
I'll begin by answering that, under the scenario you have in front of you, most scenarios you have in front of you, and also previously with the water-related rates that you've already looked at, there would still be general fund support or subsidy within the first few years. The goal is to basically wean the system off of that support. So, and if I can direct you to the staff report, that there's an exhibit that shows general fund support on page 3. It's Table 1. The general fund support would be more significant in the first year, but over time, that general fund support or subsidy would decrease with the goal of, in the final year, the fifth year, there would be zero general fund support. With the water system, it's a similar trend, although in the five-year period, there would still be some level of general fund support at the end, but less so than today.
Another thing, under Proposition 218, if there's a majority protest, and City Council may consider and vote on whether to adopt the proposed rate increase and adjustments, is that correct?
That's correct. There's nothing that would compel the City Council to approve it, but the City Council, under the law, would be allowed to approve it if there's not a majority protest. And again, I'll defer to City Attorney Pam Lee for any other specifics.
Okay. Thank you. That's my end of my question. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Say. Councilmember Hong, do you have any questions?
I think I just want to verify, the water rate and the sewer rate is two separate? Do we have to, two separate issue? We don't have to vote together? It's two separate voting, or is it together?
There are two separate rates that are being studied, and we're seeking council direction this evening on which scenario to study and complete, so we can come back to you with a final report. But there would be a separate series of water rates versus sewer rates, but they would be presented to the community at the same time.
I don't know if your question also asked if you vote for one, you have to vote for both? That's not necessary. Each rate increase is its own rate increase.
So when we're doing the voting, we can say, yes, I disagree, I oppose for the water rate increase, but I agree with the sewer rate increase? I guess that's my question.
That would be within your prerogative, yes. And anybody who votes to protest would be able to protest one, both, or whatever they want to do, because they are separate rates.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hong. Councilmember Polito, do you have any questions?
I do not, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Just wanted to point out clarification. If we can go back to the slide that shows the proposed dates for community, there we go. I just wanted to alert, the second bullet point, I believe, should be September 6 at 10:00 a.m.
That's correct, Mayor Protem. The first date, September 5, is a Friday, on the Friday afternoon at 2:00 p.m. The second date should read September 6 at 10:00 a.m. It's a Saturday. And the final date is Tuesday, September 9 at 10:00 a.m. at the senior center. And additional details are on the website listed, cerritos.gov/waterrates. And people are encouraged to RSVP by calling City Hall.
Yes, I've seen it on the website. So yes, I'd like to encourage residents to please go to the website and sign up and register for these.
And if I may add, thank you, Mayor Protem, that the first two meetings at the corporate yard, if any residents who attend that would have the opportunity to see directly our water infrastructure and all that goes into delivering water to our homes. our homes. The, the Senior Center opportunity is just to provide a different opportunity, different access for a different community. But we'll have some photos to share at that, at that meeting.
Thank you.
What did, what was the report, again, regarding how we are informing the community and the residents and the businesses about this open house schedule?
We have issued, done a few things. We've issued a press release, and I'll defer to Director of Administrative Services Drew Schneider to talk about other communications that are occurring.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for the question. We have a robust communications effort on this item. We've posted multiple social media posts. The column from the mayor's, the mayor's column this week will feature this topic, along with the press release that the city manager mentioned, and it'll be included in Monday's new digital edition of our newsletter.
Did we mail anything out?
No, we, we've done digital communications on this, given the short timing. We are not mailing newsletters. I, I will say, though, that if the city council directs a Prop 218 protest hearing, that will involve direct mail to all relevant properties.
Okay, so my, the question I have regarding scenario one and two. Okay, so scenario one and two, and I'm just looking for the way it's, we described it here. Yes, so scenario one is the large, is a larger rate increase in year one with smaller increases in years two and five. Scenario two is a smaller rate increase in year one with gradual increases in year, years two and five. So we see that in the presentation, that the, the example amounts for the bimonthly bill, we see that it's, we see how that, those two different scenarios play out in the residence, resident, the residential bills over the five years, '26, '27, '28, '29, '30, on a bimonthly bill, bimonthly bills. So it's clear that it's different, different amounts. Under scenario one, 20, 2026, it's $9.82, $9.82 on the bimonthly bill, which is $4.91 a month. And then for under scenario two, the bimonthly bill is $5.41, which is $2.70 a month. So the residents are going to be billed under a typical single-family residential connection using 20 CCFs per bimonthly bill period. They're going to get billed different amounts. So I don't, so what I'm trying to figure out is, under slide nine, why is the projected general fund support to the sewer fund over the next five fiscal years, the exact same under scenario one and two? And I, and I, you know, I know you're going to explain that so we, the council can understand it, because it wasn't clear to me in the presentation. What I want to point out, before you answer my question, on why is the projected general fund support amounts the exact same over the next five years under scenarios one and two, even though we're going to be billing our residents different amounts? But what bothers me about this, can we put it up? Number nine? What, what bothers me about that is that showing me that under scenario one and scenario two, the general fund, whether we pass scenario one, whether we approve scenario one or scenario two, the general fund is going to be subsidizing almost $4 million over the next four years. Okay, why are the amounts exactly the same? Why is the city of Ceritos General Fund going to subsidize almost $4 million of the sewer, sewer usage by our residents? Why is the numbers the exact same under both scenarios?
I'll begin by answering, and I'll defer to Mr. Papa and Mr. Cubert in a minute. But the, the two scenarios, scenarios one and two, basically are different preferences as sort of the rate of change, as you had outlined. The reason for the general fund support is primarily to do with our capital project needs. And for that, I'll defer to Mr. Papa to outline that.
Yes, thank you for the question, Mayor. So with regards to the general fund support, the amount of support that we selected was to be able to provide a reasonable rate increase that would be amenable to the residents. You know, initially, we looked at, what if we put zero general fund support, similar to what we did when we presented the water rate scenarios? We had presented a scenario with zero general fund support, and then with some general fund support. Based on council's direction for the water rate scenarios, we created the sewer rate scenarios to model the similar type of adjustment trajectory that was selected for water rate scenarios 2A and 2B that was presented at the time. So we modeled this very similarly. The general fund amounts are less, but the gradual reductions are proportionally roughly the same. With regards to why the general fund is the same for both scenarios, it's, we looked at the amount of funding support that we needed to get to a reasonable amount. And when you look at both scenarios, if you don't mind going to the slide after that, the line graph, yes. So when looking at this line graph, the amount of fund accumulation over the course of five years is approximately $3.6 million. And the end reserve amount ends up being 1.3 in both scenarios. The capital expenditure is the same in both scenarios, general fund support is the same, it's just the rate of accumulation. So if you look at the blue line, we charge more upfront in the first year, so we start building up the reserves faster. And those reserves, the saving of reserves slows down towards the tail end, but we end up at 1.3 million. With the orange light, it's a little more gradual, where the buildup reserves is slower and gradually increases over time. But ultimately, in the end, we still end up at our minimum reserve target of 1.3 million. The general fund, the base is still the same, but however, the, the final target is the same in both scenarios. So it's just, do you want to save more upfront and slow down the savings at the end? Or do you want to start, start saving slower in the beginning and ramp it up at the end? And so the reason we presented these two options is for council consideration, whether, you know, what, I think council has a better feel as to what the residents would prefer. There are different, some, there are many residents that the initial increase, they can weather it very simply and, and handle that. But for some, an adjustment of that much might be a little harder for them, and it may be easier for them to slowly ramp up over time. And so that's why these two scenarios were presented. General fund, though, the, the general fund amount is the same in, in both scenarios, so that we can make it apples to apples and clear when selecting a scenario, really, it's just the rate of change in the adjustment.
Thank you, Alvin. Like I said, under this, number nine, can you, can we go back to number nine? So what that shows is, over the next four years, over the next four years, the, our city of Ceritos General Fund is going to be, you know, rounding it, rounding it off, our city of Ceritos General Fund is going to spend $4 million to subsidize our residents using our, our city of Cerito sewers, correct? When you add up those four general fund support figures over the next four fiscal years, rounding it off, it's $4 million in general fund money, our taxpayer dollars, going to subsidize the sewer rates, which is what this council is talking about. Do we want to keep subsidizing millions and millions of dollars for our residents to use water and sewer? So that, this is, that's rounding it up $4 million over the next four years, right?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct.
So can you tell me, if we did no adjustment, how much would the general fund be subsidizing over the next four years?
If we did no adjustment, the need would be...
Are you able to answer that right now?
Yes, I just need one second to... Approximately $12.1 million over the course of five years.
So over $8 million more dollars will, will, will be drained, will be drained out of our general fund if the city council did nothing on our sewer rates, which has been happening all these years. That, that, we've been, we, the city council before us is just, we've just kept kicking this can down the road. And you just calculate, you just confirmed in your numbers that if we did nothing, then over the next four years, that's over $12 million of general fund money, taxpayer dollars going to subsidize the sewer.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
By our residents.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Alvin. Okay, so I will now open for public comments on this item. Mr. Palmer, you didn't sign up, but you, it's your next.
You have my card.
You're next.
You have my address. So, so while we're talking about sewer...
Thank you.
While we're talking about sewer, Valley View southbound at 183rd was blocked today by Orange County Sewer Project, but that's not why I stood up. So when you do your, when you read, maybe you ought to redo your chart and include La Palma on your chart, because that's where a number of us pay our sewer rates for La Palma. Secondly, is that when you list the, the meetings, I can understand that probably at the corporate yard, you maybe have a limit of 30, but there were 200, over 200 people at the Senior Center for the rezoning. So we, I think we should anticipate that there might be more than 30 people that would be interested in coming to the Senior Center. So I hope there's not a 30-person limit, because that's the inference that was given. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. And, and, and question, it is correct that not all of our Ceritos residents use city of Cerito, are not billed by the city of Ceritos for sewer and water, correct?
That is correct. What was referenced is a portion of the southeast part of the city that is serviced by City of La Palma. And there are also some pockets of the city toward the southern end that are serviced by Golden State Water, which is a private water company. And those rates are significantly higher than what Ceritos, other Ceritos water utility users pay.
Yes. Okay, do we have any other public comments? Kirat? The iPad is not working. The iPad is not working?
It's an update.
Okay, thank, thank you for letting us know that. Kirat, thank you for coming to public comment. Please, public comment.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So as compared to the water one, I like the document that was presented. One, it is clear, concise. It meets all the objectives of the, your intent, what the costs are, how they're comparable. And the last page, which is wonderful, because it actually spells out what it's, what, where the costs are going, and there's actually an inflation factor built into it. That was missing from the water. That data did not exist. So nobody should expect sewer rates at 64 cents. So the gradual approach is the right approach. Nobody wants to see the rate increase, but it also does not preclude you from supporting or putting general funds into this project, which you are doing, at least $4 million for the lifespan of this project. It also means that in five years' time, if the funding goes flat, you may have to go back into general fund to support any excess costs beyond that. So I'm just making, for the record, that, that needs to be stated. Second, what is the amount that the residents will have to pay? Am I correct in assuming it is proportionate to your water usage? If it is, say so. And then how will we build? Is it going to be one singular bill? Or are you going to tie it up together so that most cities have water and sewer together? And that's what I had to say about it. So please be concise and clear with the water rates. To me, you can provide a much bigger general support for the water as you are doing with the sewer. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chauhan. And you're right, you, you met, you, you confer, you mentioned that, you know, the current bill, 64 cents, that's bimonthly. So right now, the residents are paying 32 cents, 32 cents a month for sewer. And can someone please answer Mr. Chauhan's question about how water and sewer, can we confirm for everybody in the room, how, and the, and those watching, how water and sewer are billed to our residents, and if that's going to change, under everything that's been discussed about water rates, adjustment, adjustment of water rates and adjustment of sewer rates?
I can begin by answering, and I'll defer to members of our team to elaborate. But yes, sewer rate, sewer, the sewer, the cost on the sewer bill is paid proportionate to water usage. The residents currently receive one bill. There's a water, a series of water line items, and there's a sewer line item. And both are based on the actual number of, the actual amount of water used. We use a unit of measure called CCF. And so all that is spelled out on the water bill. If anyone asks questions about that bill, they're, they're welcome to call City Hall, speak to members of our water billing team, also members of our Public Works team, and we'd be happy to explain that further. But water and sewer are both currently billed together, and that would not change. So it, and it is proportionate to water used.
Anything else, Mr. Chauhan? You're, you're good? Thank you. Thank you for your compliments about the agenda report put together by Alvin, Drew, Chris, Peter, and Sergio. Are there any other speakers on this item? Benjamin, any questions? Okay, any comments? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Does the council have any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Say?
One more question, since Attorney just mentioned about, we can go seven, I mean, we can go seven years instead of five years. So it's kind of more gradually, instead of, you go so fast, and, you know, how some residents may not able to. Sewer is very low, I know, a very small amount, really, I mean, but that, go back to water. If you're going to do the same thing, I mean, going to do the same, can we do seven years instead of five years?
A seven-year study would not, we're not making a recommendation, because the fact that if you're adding two more years, there's going to be more infrastructure that you're going to need to fix. because the fact that if you're adding two more years, there's gonna be more infrastructure that you're gonna need to fix, which means you would add to the cost. It's not stretching five years of payments over seven years. You're gonna be stretching seven years of payments over seven years. So it doesn't really matter. The reason we're doing a five year analysis is it is the most accurate.
Okay.
And it's aligned with the five year capital improvement um plan, the CIP.
Yeah, I just wanted to publicly hear that because they some people don't understand it. So I can do seven or ten years. Come from your mouth exactly. I appreciate it, your answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hong.
Um, I guess I have a question, maybe is also for some of the residents. Say the worst scenario, uh this didn't get approved after the voting, okay? So does that mean because since we already approved the budget for this year up to next year, does that means it's gonna affect our budget deficit is gonna get more or what's the situation? Not until we really approve it, otherwise, you know what I mean? We already approved our budget, and this one is doesn't go through just you know, with this scenario, does that means next year we're gonna have even more um squa- struggling points with our budget deficit?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Hong. That is correct. There's actually two primary impacts if rate increases are not approved. And the first is a financial impact. The budget was adopted as part of the discussion that occurred during our budget study sessions. The budget was adopted assuming there would be some sort of increase. There was an estimate put in there. Um a certain amount of revenues, assuming a a water and sewer rate increase would occur. And if that doesn't occur, then that would widen the deficit uh that is currently in place in the adopted budget. Um, secondly, the secondary impact is that certain projects that are necessary and are deemed critical wouldn't be funded or would have to come through uh from our uh general fund reserves, therefore further depleting uh what we have there. Um I'd like to defer to Mr. Papa to talk about um some of those projects, what they include as to um and why they're necessary. So I'll, uh Mr. Papa, if you can please outline some of the water and sewer projects that are proposed uh within our CIP in the upcoming years.
Yes, uh, thank you, Councilmember Lopez. Um, so in the event um that we remain status quo and um additional uh other rates are not adjusted, we will be in a situation where we'll not will not be able to deliver even critical projects. So right now, we know our sewers are roughly between forty to seventy years old. Many of them are made from vitrified clay pipe, which over the years become brittle and start cracking. Um, the last time we were able to run those CCTV cameras through our sewers was back in two thousand seventeen. It's approaching ten years since we knew what's happening underground. We know those pipes are beginning to break. We know those pipes are beginning to get full. Um, we will be at risk of having sewer spills within the City of Cerritos. We may not be able to repair pipes. Um, and that it becomes a a serious public health and safety issue. Um, the reason we raise it now is uh if you look at the list of projects, we have three years of CCTV. Um, so by law, we're supposed to be um review running CCTV cameras through our entire city network every five years. Um, I don't know that we're I'm compliant right now. So um but by being able to CCTV, our sewer system will be able to find the breaks, will be able to fix them. One important thing is if we're able to do this now, we can line um sewer pipe. So instead of having to dig up broken pipe, we can put in what's kind of like a sock that goes in the pipe. It it has resin on it and they heat it up with steam, so it blows up like a balloon in the pipe and it hardens. The the cost to do that is probably twenty times cheaper than digging up a pipe and replacing it. So we're at an optimum time where we can CCTV our pipes, um start relining and getting um good infrastructure in place that will save us money. Um, if we don't do anything in future years, we can look, you know, there's we increase there's an increased risk for sewer breaks, sewer main breaks that ends up, you know, we're having to we're going to have to open up the street, dig down, um replace sewer pipe, and that typically costs several hundred dollars per foot. Um, and then we also deal with potential for sewer spills. Um, and so that's an issue. Um, and also, you know, to go back to what uh City Manager Lopez said is uh in those situations, we will need general fund. There will be no choice. Uh, the deficit will increase or we'll have to draw down reserves. And I mean, that means taking away, you know, like we had to meet to in order to meet the or to reduce the deficit in this year's budget, there were city services uh that were reduced. IT, infrastructure services to the city, closure of the library, many projects that were left unfunded and um I think we could anticipate future additional projects to be added to our current unfunded list.
Thank you for the explanation. I think that's very beneficial to um the council and hopefully for all the residents. Thank you.
And following up on that, you know, using that sock method of um for the for to make sure that our sewer pipes um are strong and we don't have to dig them up uh if they they deteriorate uh enough that we have to dig them up instead of using the sock method. You said it's gonna save. You said twenty times cheaper. That's gonna we can use the sock method under scenario one or scenario two. Correct?
Uh, correct, yes, Mayor.
We're gonna give you enough money. We're gonna give this Public Works and the City of Cerritos enough money under scenario one or scenario two to save money for the residents by using the sock method, which is twenty times cheaper than having to dig up deteriorated pipe and replace it.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. Councilmember Polito, any questions or comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protem? Johnson? Okay, so um I want wanted to remind um everybody the council, this council, and I want to remind all the residents that this uh review and consideration of the need for sewer rate adjustments has been uh a long time coming. It has been into works for years. This has been approved. The need for this has been approved by the city council for years. Okay, and for whatever reason, and I've complained about this multiple times, for whatever reason, we're hearing about it today on August twenty eight, two thousand twenty five. Okay, in this in this agenda report. But what I wanted to let everybody, I want to give the background. On May eighteen, two thousand twenty, a motion was made about potential options for rate increases for residential and commercial accounts of the City of Cerrito Sewer System. It was moved by Grace Hu and seconded by Chang Vo to direct staff to proceed with the commencement of the procedures to hold public hearings to consider adopting a rate increase including completion of analysis of sewer rates, development of a rate schedule, and all other processes related to compliance with Proposition two eighteen. The motion carried unanimously for O with Grace Hu voting yes, Frank Yokuyama voting yes, Chang Vo voting yes, Naresh Solanki voting yes. So the Cerrito City Council unanimously told staff on May eighteen, two thousand twenty to work to to do the work on rate increases for residential and commercial accounts of the City of Cerrito Sewer System. So here we are over five years later. So this has been kicked down the can tick the can has been kicked down the street too many times. Okay, I want to let my council colleagues know that uh the city council in two thousand twenty uh clearly and unanimously voted that sewer rates needed to be adjusted back in two thousand twenty. Okay, so this is not this is not like a brand new thing that, oh, my gosh, we need to we need, you know, we need to take care of this um because it's being identified by the city council for the first time. I'm just glad that the five of us uh are gonna do something about it. Because nothing even that after the city council approved this motion by unanimous four O vote, City Hall has not brought anything back to us for over five years. And I won't go into the excuses I've heard as a council member over those five years. Okay, but let's do something about it now. But I wanted to I wanted to assure the council that this has been identified by the city council as a problem of the sewer rates not being um viable for the continuation of the financial um strength of our city and to not continually deplete our general fund of millions and millions of dollars. As Alvin said, i- if we did nothing like nothing has been over the past five years, that's over twelve million more dollars out of the general fund fund over the next four years. So that's my comment. That uh I'm not happy that it's taken over five years for the City Hall to bring this back to the council. But at least it's here today, okay? Do we have a motion? Do my council colleagues have a motion? Mayor Protem?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve Scenario one. Um, I realize that it uh is a double of the increase on on Scenario two. However, uh it's a lower amount on the proposed January twenty thirty. So therefore, my motion would be for Scenario one and to direct staff to finalize the sewer rate study report accordingly and present the final reports for city council review and consideration at a future meeting.
Uh, second, please.
So we have a motion by Mayor Protem, a second by Councilmember Say. Let's vote.
The motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, council colleagues. Item nine C. City manager, do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, item nine C uh is uh contains two parts. The first is an annual action as it relates to the upcoming calendar year's schedule of meetings. And the second part follows up on prior couns- council consensus direction related to the possible uh rescheduling of regular city council meetings. Um, this presentation will be given by City Clerk Cindy Nava, and following her presentation, all members of our team will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. If you would please uh draw your attention to the screen, the item before you, as the city manager mentioned, is consideration of the city council and successor agency regular meeting schedule. Annually, the city council reviews its meeting schedule for the upcoming year in preparation for the production of the Cerritos Community Calendar. Additionally, in May, the city council directed staff to draft an ordinance for city council consideration of modifications to the regular meeting schedule, including the potential change to Monday meetings. The city charter requires the city council meet at least once monthly, and the regular meeting schedule be adopted by ordinance or resolution. The current said schedule is set by ordinance, therefore, city council adoption of a new ordinance repealing that in place is necessary to modify the regular meeting schedule. Since first formally established, the regular city council meeting schedule and or uh next slide, please. The regular city council meeting schedule and or location has been modified by the adoption of ordinance ten times over the years. As shown on the screen, meetings have been held on Wednesdays, a combination of Wednesdays and Thursdays, and Thursdays throughout the city's history. The ordinance presented as Exhibit five of the Agenda Report proposes a regular meeting schedule of second and fourth Mondays at seven P M. With that schedule, second meetings dark in November and December due to the holiday season. It also denotes an implementation date of January one, two thousand twenty six. A Tuesday meeting day alternative is also presented in the report and on the screen. This evening, the city council may modify the schedule as desired. The ordinance would then be modified as directed and presented to the city council for a second reading and adoption at the next regular meeting scheduled for Thursday, September twenty fifth, as ordinance may ordinances may only be adopted at regular meetings. City staff has reviewed next year's regular meeting schedule for each proposed iteration and has suggested certain modifications where date conflicts exist due to observed city holidays, city-related business events, and conferences. It is important to note the city's newly implemented alternate work schedule has created some operational challenges with respect to agenda posting deadlines mandated by city policy. Whether or not the city council's schedule is modified, city staff seeks direction from the council to bring a resolution for consideration at a future meeting to amend the policy to adjust these deadlines as necessary. It is recommended the city council review and discuss and receive public comment on this item. Direct staff to amend Policy nine point oh three as needed and present a resolution for city council adoption at a future meeting. If modifying the regular meeting schedule is desired, wait for reading of and introduce an ordinance of the City of Cerritos amending chapter two point zero four point zero one zero of the Cerritos Municipal Code to modify the city council regular meeting schedule inclusive of any modifications the city council deems appropriate. And the city council should also consider approving the proposed modifications to the respective two thousand twenty six meeting schedule due to schedule conflicts as presented in the Agenda Report or direct staff accordingly. Additionally, if the city council should choose to change to a regular meeting schedule that conflicts with that of an advisory board, staff should be directed to bring a report back to the council presenting ordinances for first reading to consider modifying that the affected advisory board regular meeting schedules. This concludes my report, and the city manager and I are available to answer any questions the city council may have.
Thank you for the report, City Clerk. Do we have any questions from the council? Councilmember Say.
Hi, Cindy, just a quick question. Is the staff, I I talked to a couple of staff, they prefer do Monday so they can have enough time to prepare our agenda, is that correct?
Uh, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, councilmembers Say, thank you for your question. Uh, really, it's a policy decision um that we will accept from council and uh we will perform our duties as directed. Um, I couldn't really say what preference, um but we have presented options of a second and fourth Monday and a second and fourth Tuesday. Uh, they're due, uh, we have seen more conflicts with the current Thursday meeting schedule.
Um, you know, I I have a day job too, and this is conflict to me. Um, I changed to actually take Thursday off just to for Friday. And now I I see the past. I never see a such city where the school district had changed so many times within a year, you say ten times, right? So I support that changes. However, I would like to say this is a conflict my personal schedule. I like to ask my colleague if he can support a Monday, which is will be okay for me.
Councilmember Hong, any questions?
Um, originally, I was opposed to the changes because I think uh residents and um we all used to uh Thursday's meeting. And after I further studied, no matter what day we pick, there'll be always some conflict of person. there'll be always some conflict of personal, with personal events and everything. And the only thing I'm most concerned about is a lot of our external meetings is always started on Wednesday or Thursday. And that's what I look back, like we have already changed several times of the meeting because of that reason. And I am elected to do this job. And for me, I don't care which day I would make my commitment to come. And so I would like to do it as whatever our colleagues, council members, colleagues that what's the convenience and the best for all of us, for, for the council, for the staff, and also for the residents. But we just have to let them know that days change and try not to keep on changing the days once we decide it and we move forward. And that's my personal comment. Thank you.
Councilmember Palito? Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes, I just have one question. As you stated, Cindy, in the report that it has, the council meetings have changed and been modified in the past. And so I just want to confirm again, it's not unusual then to modify an ordinance to adopt a new meeting schedule?
Thank you for your question, Mayor Protem Johnson. No, it is absolutely not unusual for a city council to adopt an ordinance, modifying the schedule to really fit the needs of the council and the city at the, at that time.
Yes, I think it's great that we have this before us to actually adopt such an ordinance should we be moving the council meeting. So that way, it's memorialized and the community would then show that we're being transparent. Thank you.
And we're now open for public comments on this item. Does anybody want to speak on public comment on Item 9C? Okay. Adrian, you're gonna turn in, is the, is the iPad working?
Yes, mayor.
Okay, you're gonna submit your name afterwards, okay?
Okay, well, I just want to talk about what Cerritos has become. I was watching the meeting on YouTube. Cerritos has become a crony capitalist city. Here's what I mean. The auto dealers, some of the biggest donors to political campaigns in the city have not had to pay the same utility rates that ordinary residents do. Commercial property owners with connections don't get cited by code enforcement the way our elderly residents do. I attended the last property preservation committee. I heard one resident refer to code enforcement as Gestapo-like.
Adrian, I, you, you're entitled to public comment and you're entitled to five minutes, but it has to be about Item 9C, city council regular meeting schedule. We are not on public, we are not on Item 6, public comment.
Cerritos doesn't belong to the political establishment, it's to the people. And it's time city hall starts acting like it. If I'm out of line on the agenda item, it's just because I'm trying to fit in public service and to residents in between working my career. And these utility rates, I, I just, it's at least pseudo crony capitalism. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment on Item 9C? Okay, seeing, seeing no other speakers for Item 9C, I will close the public comment period. Does the council have any additional questions or comments, councilmember Say?
I think I made my statement very clearly, if we can't have a meeting on Monday, replace a Thursday, Monday meeting, if we can. Do you, do you want to make amendment for, oh no, okay, I just got question.
Councilmember Hong, do you have any additional questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Palito? Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes, I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as we have stated in the staff report, it is not unusual for us to modify our ordinance to change our council meetings. Just this past year, we have had changes to this year's meeting schedule due to scheduling conflicts. We are finding that Thursday meetings conflict with many of our conferences because most conferences include a Thursday session. By moving our meetings to a Monday or Tuesday, there is minimal conflict as opposed to Thursday meetings. I realize we cannot avoid every scenario, but Thursdays do have the most conflicts. This council is very active, and many of us do attend conferences, including our staff and our city manager. And also, with the recent adoption of the 980 alternate, alternative work schedule, many of our employees have opted in on this program, giving them every other Friday off. With staff being off on Friday after a Thursday meeting, this poses some operational challenges. And by adopting a new schedule with the least scheduling conflicts also benefits our residents, as there will be less cancellations and rescheduling of meetings. Just in this past year alone, we've had to cancel and reschedule many of our meetings because of a Thursday conflict, and this causes transparency concerns with our residents. They want a schedule that is consistent and that we meet on a set meeting date. We also want to make sure they're able to participate and engage in a council meeting. We're not asking to change the start time of the meeting. So whatever day is chosen, the meetings will continue to have a start time of 7 o'clock PM. Residents don't like change, even council members do not like change. But we do need to be able to see the challenges that we are faced with and to be able to pivot ourselves to address these challenges. By not doing so does not help our staff and our residents. In fact, by looking at next year's 2026 schedule, it already shows that we will have to move our meeting at least four times due to a conference. I also prefer moving to a Monday meeting as there are less conflicts with our commission meetings. By moving to a Tuesday meeting, we would disrupt the currently scheduled meetings of the Economic Development Commission and the Property Preservation Commission. So when it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion to select the 2nd and 4th Mondays as our regular council meeting dates.
Anything else, Mayor Protem?
That's it.
Can I ask?
Councilmember Hong?
Okay, have you, have we considered how many national holiday falls on Monday as well?
Thank you for your question, Councilmember Hong. Yes, we have noted, there are, for the 2nd and 4th Monday option, annually, there generally would be a conflict in May. On Memorial Day, however, that falls on the last Monday of the month, so it will not always be a conflict. There is also with the Thursday current meeting schedule, a November conflict annually. With 2nd and 4th Tuesdays, the conflicts are with the commission meetings that Mayor Protem mentioned. With 1st and 3rd Mondays, we did not include that option because there are a few additional holiday conflicts.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mayor Protem?
No.
Thank you for your, thank you for your comments, Mayor Protem. I'm still against changing the regularly scheduled Thursday meetings of the city council. I'm against it. It's worked for me as one of, it's worked for me as one of five council members since 2017. And what this Agenda Report shows me is no matter what days of the week, Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, there's going to be changes that have to be made. Because there's, there's conflicts identified in this Agenda Report, whether it's on the 2nd and 4th Monday, or the 2nd and 4th Tuesday, or 2nd and 4th Thursday. And I also know that there's a number of reasons why this council has moved meetings. It's not just conferences, there's just a number of valid reasons that this council has compromised and, and transparently voted to move our Thursday meetings to another date for a number of valid reasons. And I, I believe that those valid, those valid reasons that we as a council voted to move meetings, we would be doing the same thing if it was on Mondays, or Tuesdays, or Thursdays. That's my, my experience and my familiarity with being a council member since 2017. So I'm still against it. I, I, I'm, I'm, you know, and maybe it's just because I'm used to it. Out of the five of us, I'm used to it because I've been on the city council since 2017. But, you know, Councilmember Palito has more years on the council than me.
I'm used to him too.
He has more years on the council than me, so. So, but I do acknowledge that, you know, you're going on your fourth year on the council, you have also gained knowledge and have developed your own observations and opinion about the meeting. So Thursday's work for me, based on my going on eight years of experience on the city council, we can make adjustments as necessary. So if you, did you make the motion yet?
No.
Okay, you, you want to make that motion. So if you make a motion to move it to Mon, to the 2nd and 4th Monday, I'm gonna vote no today.
Yes.
I will, I will take one more look at this. If you postpone this to September 8. I know they want to work on the calendar, I know they want to work on the calendar, but September 8 is 11 days away. And I'll take one more look on, I'll take one more look at this and try to be open-minded and try to consider this change for you. But otherwise, I'm gonna vote no on your motion. So I'll look at it again and, and I'll look at, I'll, I'll read this, I'll review this Agenda Report again and just really see how is this gonna work for the future of the Cerritos City Council? The city council makes policy. The Cerritos City Council makes policy. City Hall and the city manager's office and the staff effectuate that policy. So we tell them when we want the meetings. It's not about their convenience or getting the Agenda Reports done and getting the Agenda Packet done. This hard-working team is gonna get it done, no matter what day the city council picks. But the city council, we were elected by the residents to make the policies that the city follows and city hall follows. So that's my, that's my comments to whoever makes the motion. That's my comments to whoever makes the motion. My motion would be, if I made the motion, my motion would be to recommend Number 4.
Number 4, what's that be?
If I made the motion, okay, councilmember Say?
Just have a question right now, it seems like we have two on the table right now. One is Mayor Protem has a motion to ask for the second, and you have another motion here, and so should...
I haven't made a motion.
You haven't made a motion yet, okay, so. And then your plan is hold this postponed to the next one, what does that mean? So, I...
I, what I said was that today, I'm gonna vote no to any change. But I told Mayor Protem Johnson, transparently, I told her that I will look at this with, I will look at this with as much, trying to be as open-minded about this as possible despite being a council member since 2017 who's used to Thursdays. But I'm giving her this information that I, I will look at this and I'm willing to look at this on the September 8 Agenda. But if she wants a decision today, my decision today is I don't want to make any changes to Thursdays. I want it stick keeping on Thursdays. So if she makes a motion to move this to Mondays, I'm gonna vote no. I don't know what's gonna happen because I don't know what the, I don't know what all of you are gonna do. Each of you is entitled to your opinion on what you think is the right thing to do for the city council to represent the residents who elected us. But I am sharing that I'm used to Thursdays. It works for me. I've been a council member since 2017, I'm going into my ninth year. My opinion from those nine years of services, Thursdays work. So if we make a final decision today, I don't want to change. But I'm willing to read the Agenda Report again and look at this on September 8. Maybe we'll get some public comment. Maybe we'll get some public comment, but did we get any written, written public comment on this? Refresh my memory.
I know, mayor, we have not received.
Okay, so we haven't got, received any written public comment. We didn't have anybody make public comment. So what's that showing is we're doing this transparently. This is a, we, we've considered this move before. Is this the second time we have an Agenda Report about moving it, or a third time we have an Agenda Report? Which one is it? But this is, we've, we've heard this a multiple ti, we've heard this multiple times. And we haven't gotten any public comment in person or written where the residents have a strong opinion about this, so it's up to us five. So I'm gonna ask the question. Does the council have any, does the city council have any additional questions or comments? Or do we have a motion?
I, I have comments.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, so, thank you, thank you, mayor, for sharing your comments and, and for letting us know that, you know, yes, we do make policy here. Staff is directed by our policy. However, I also like to think of us as a team. We are a team of elected, the, the governing body, and then with staff support. That needs to work together. Because this team has realized what the, what, what has realized that implementing a 980 schedule is something that benefits our employees. We have adopted a 980 schedule. And with the 980 schedule, there are some consequences to that, which I have already stated, which also impacts Fridays, the Fridays after the council meetings. I want to be mindful of that because, you know, we have demands on our Thursday meetings that we need or cannot be performed the following Friday because there's no staff. Not only that, you know, we're, I always look at us as a council that tries to help out as much as we can with morale. Like I said, the 980 was something that the employees wanted, we gave it to them. I think a Monday meeting as well helps them with their preparing, preparation of staff reports. I want to help them there as well. It's, it's not unusual to change council meetings. And, and like I said, yes, we can keep changing, as you said, we can keep changing them. But then again, it doesn't help the public. They, they're already upset that we keep changing these meetings. The calendar is printed with meetings. Then they see on the calendar that there's like a May 1 meeting, and then that meeting had been canceled at a previous council meeting, and they're not aware of it. And the fact that there's no public comments or anybody making input now, I don't think impacts our decision because we really don't have people that comment that much. They're commenting on social media. They're already upset that we're changing our meetings. So by adopting policy, we are memorializing it that these meetings will now be held on, for example, a Monday, on the first, on the 2nd and 4th Mondays. Those are my comments. Also, Thursday meetings really didn't impact previous councils, and I, I don't mean to go back into when Mark was on council, but, you know, the previous, the council previous to this did not really attend conferences. So it was not much of an impact to that council. This council is active. We are all going to council, to, to conferences. We have a city manager that now shows up at conferences. We've not had city managers show up at a conference for years. So as we go into these conferences, they're surprised that Cerritos does have a city manager. And that's because Robert is very involved and I love that he's making his connections. I love that he's being active and at some point I would love to see him on leadership roles in um some of those external organizations. That's my hope for this city. So um, like I said, I, when it's appropriate, I like to make my motion. Is it, can I do that now then?
Yeah, can I have a question? So I, I mean, just kind of comments.
Council member say?
Oh, I'm sorry. This, no, I'm going to finish up really quick. Sorry, sorry. And, and so like you had mentioned, this has come before this council on May 22nd with a full report. Full report for everybody here to read, ask the staff for questions, understand the impacts. It's here before us today, again, the same full report. So I don't know what a third meeting would do. I mean, it's not going to change the report. We've all had an opportunity to read the reports, what the impacts are. So that's, I, I don't, I'm not inclined to delay. I, I, again, I'm mindful of staff. They need to get their stuff done. They need to get the calendar going. We need to move forward. I, I don't like things done at the last minute. And they're do, they're working for us. So how can we have them work for us if we're not making it any easier for them? So that's my comment. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I love it, I love it, I love what, I love it, I love it what you say, um Mayor Protem, I really do, you know? Your suggestion is absolutely correct. But like you just say, we're a team here. We don't have to have a five to zero, I understand that too. However, Mayor did request one thing, say we can holding a one meeting. Would that be affect us a lot or can he think about it? Let him think. I mean, he should have think it before even the post.
Well, yeah, we've had two reports on this already.
Again, you know, uh, I learned uh it's a different meeting by previous old thing. So I realized that there are time be flexible, understanding it. I love the way you say, seriously, I, I went to the outside meeting, you know, and then I suggest, I agree with you even if you see now it's on Tuesday meeting, I like to attend, but sometimes
Yeah.
I just can't, it's conflict there and but that what we call that um point order thing, we already know what's going on. The way I want to ask the lawyers appropriate because it pretty much, you know, what on the table right now here.
I, I just want to say that, you know, yeah, if we delay, we can, but then would you, would you, would you want last minute stuff to do? I mean, our, 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 our staff needs to get the calendar done. They need to get it printed. They need, and they're already doing a lot for us. Why would you lay put something on their desk at the last minute?
If it's one meeting behind that.
That's two weeks. You know, do you know what that, what is the deadline Cindy?
What's the deadline? Yeah, let us know the deadline.
So uh there is some time sensitivity involved to uh what's before you. We do have the community calendar that we're working to prepare. Part of that layout includes all the city council meetings as for the upcoming calendar year. Um, the calendar, as you know, is delivered every year to homes uh in uh late November, usually early December. And uh there's time to um to prepare them for delivery, working backwards. There's printing part of that, there's layout uh which includes the meeting schedule. Could it be accommodated uh with a, with a decision made later? Yes, it would just mean a more of a rushed impact for our staff.
So I, I just want to remind as well that on May 22nd, we had a staff report come before us. It was on the agenda. I was asked, I would not, I wasn't asked, I delayed that one only because I don't think the council was ready yet to make a vote. So I already delayed it once. Oh, I'm going to make my motion.
Okay, can I, can I comment before you make your motion? So I'm going to my position is no change. And I ask my council colleagues to not change it. You uh ran for city council and got elected to city council knowing we had meetings on Thursdays. And I know that you're now you're gaining experience, you're learning, you're representing the residents who voted you and thank you for doing that and we're working together and we've gotten a lot of good, good things done and we're going to continue to get good things done together. But you know, Thursday's worked for you guys, otherwise you wouldn't have ran for council. So I could see that um, you know, there, there is viewpoints to supporting, moving it to Monday. But I want to keep it on Thursday and I'm asking my council colleagues to keep it on Thursdays. I look at this agenda report and I see uh the proposed modifications if we keep, if we have our meetings on Thursdays. And the proposed modifications are either due to holidays. Holiday, they're holiday weeks or the League of California Cities. Four of these proposed modifications are because of one organization, League of California Cities. And therefore that would only affect the city council. These proposed changes, which we're assuming that it's going to affect the city council. But when you look at what the events are, two of them are related to policy committee meetings. So first of all, that means the city council member or members have to be on a, a League of California City Policy Committee. Currently, uh, there were two council members who were on a policy committee in 2025. That was Linda and myself. Okay? So it says policy committee meetings Thursday, Friday. The, the, it's actually, as our city clerk knows, it's Thursday or Friday. So if the policy committee meeting is on Friday, it is not on the same day as a city council meeting. And even if the policy committee meeting is on Thursday, if it's, if it's uh virtual or here in Southern California, you're going to be done by 2 P M. So it doesn't conflict with the city council meeting. If it's virtual or if it's in Southern California. It only matters if we have to go up to Northern California to Southern Calif- to Sacramento, for example. But for these Cal Cities Policy Committee meetings, it's not a conference, council colleagues. The Cal City Policy Committee meetings, which are two of these proposed modifications for Thursday, those Cal Cities Policy Committee meetings, they're not conferences, they're committee, policy committee meetings that you're only supposed to, you're only supposed to attend if you're on a policy committee, which you have to apply for and be selected and be appointed to that policy committee. And the policy committee meetings are on either Thursday morning, ending in the early afternoon or Friday morning, ending in the early afternoon. And this, the past few years, the policy committee meetings have been virtual and then one meeting in Southern California and then one meeting in Northern California. So these are not complete conflicts for these Cal Cities Policy Committee meetings. Also, there's the City Leader Summit, Cal City, City Leader Summit and the Cal Cities Annual Conference. So if you, if the council members are going to the City Leader Summit or going to the annual conference, then it's a conflict. If you don't go to the conference, it's not a conflict. But these, these Cal Cities Policy Committee meetings are, are definitely not a Thursday, Friday complete conflict. It just depends if the, the five council members apply for and are selected and appointed to a policy committee that has a meeting time that somehow conflicts with the Thursday night city council meeting. So I just wanted to point out that these proposed modifications, if we make no change to our regular meeting schedule of Tuesdays and Thurs- of second and fourth Thursdays of the month, the only event that's a organ, uh, a, a, an organization that conflicts is Cal Cities. So there's no other conflicts from, on this proposed modification list so far from any other organization. And then they do conflicts, they, they show conflicts for holidays. But those same conflicts for holidays are showing up on Mondays. For example, Thanksgiving week or, 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 or December holiday schedule in December or Memorial Day holiday. So so the second and fourth Monday actually has three conflicts because of holidays. And moving it to Thursday, you have the same three. So we don't benefit by moving it to Mondays. We have three holiday conflicts on Mondays and we have three holiday conflicts on Thursdays. So there's no benefit regarding the holiday conflicts, except I see here that this, the city clerk and preparing, the city clerk and the city manager in preparing this report, they said if we kept it on Thursdays, they want to move Thursday, January 8th to January 12th because of operational challenges. So I'm okay with that. I'm okay, I'm okay with moving it with, moving it because of operational challenges identified by the city manager and the city clerk. But it's not because January 8th is a holiday. It's just because you're telling me that the Friday, the week before that, you know, we might have people celebrating the holidays. But it's, it's an operational challenge and, and that, that's what I'm talking about. This city, this city council is willing to be reasonable and make reasonable changes to a Thursday schedule, just like we would make reasonable changes to a Monday schedule. But, but I'll say that one more time. Under this agenda report, there's three holiday conflicts on Thursdays. There's three holiday conflicts on Monday. There's no benefit from changing it from Thursday to Monday regarding holiday conflicts. It's the same exact number of holiday conflicts. As long as you consider an operational challenge, the same thing as a holiday conflict. And that's why it's included under Thursdays.
May I make a comment, please?
Council, uh Mayor Protem, Linda.
Yeah, so it's not just that. I mean, I'm on Cal Cities, I sit on both committees. So I'm in committees for two days. And if you're in Sacramento, you're not coming home on a Thursday and I would miss a meeting.
I agree.
So, so I, and, and, and you know, I want to make it easy for my colleagues to be able to join in on a committee without um a problem of having to uh, a scheduling conflict. But you know, it's not just us, it's also the city manager. He's going to miss out on conferences on a Thursday when we have council meetings. So I'm looking at the bigger picture, how it affects others.
If we have, if we, if we keep it up.
And, and, and not only that, we have city programming on Thursdays. We have concerts under the stars. The Cerritos Center for the Performing Arts has now beefed up their programming where it's now Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. There's rarely any shows on a Monday or Tuesday. I'm just saying, if we want to be able to participate in city events and, and most of the cities are, are surrounding cities are all on Mondays and Tuesdays. Nobody has a Thursday meeting. That's all. But I'm, I'm ready to make my motion um if I can. I just think bringing this back is just delaying it more and more and we need to move on. I don't want to spend another two hours on this at the next meeting.
Okay, and I, 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 I just want to make sure that all of the council members get to express their opinions and positions and, and thank you for sharing. And I, I will comment, one, make one more comment. If we start talking about uh things other than um, you know, League of California Cities, committee meetings, conferences, if we start considering city events like that we've talked about in the past, Linda, if we start talking about Cerritos Center for the Performing Arts shows, if we start talking about concert, concert, concerts under the stars, National Night Out, all the um, all these city events, then that should be transparently included in the agenda report.
It was in the last report. It was in the last report. A, a, all I'm looking for here is that we have a policy that is memorialized. The residents are aware of it. I want transparency for the city. Then we're not going to get all this backlash of keep changing because there's already backlash where they're like, oh, they're scheduling another special meeting. Oh, they're trying to avoid people coming to our meetings because they're trying to hide something from us. We're going to put all that away. We're going to memorialize it, second and fourth Monday. I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, and, and thank you because, because I, in the city council, we know the facts. This is a public body, noticed and agendized, our meetings are noticed and agendized. The public is welcome to come and speak at public comment. The wel- the public is welcome to view the meeting in real time. Uh, if they can't attend in person, the public is able to provide written public comment. So I completely disagree with anybody who says that our meetings are not available to be attended by the residents.
No, they're used to the Thursdays. That's why they can't, they like the, they, they, they see the Thursdays. Then when we move it to another day, that's where the complaint comes in. But I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, you're going to make your motion. So I'm going to ask one last time, does any of my council colleagues have any additional questions or comments? Okay, council member Palito.
Uh, just to elaborate, uh, yes, uh, I, I got used to um attending, participating in meetings on Thursdays, second and fourth Thursdays. My preference is to keep it that way. I respect uh all the um input uh that my colleagues have shared about moving it. But yeah, I'd, I'd prefer it uh to keep it that way. Uh, I, I like uh having the full week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday ramping up uh to prepare for the Thursday meeting. And then come Friday, you know, while the city business, city council business is done, then I could enjoy the weekend. I mean, that's just kind of like my cycle. So it's my personal preference based upon what works well for me. But I think the comments made about uh preferences among staff, that I, I respect that also. Uh, but uh my vote is going to be in alignment with my preferences and in past practice. Hope that helps. Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to select the second and fourth Mondays as our regular council meeting dates and to be affected of January 1, 2026 and to waive full reading of and introduce an ordinance of the City of Cerritos amending chapter 2.04.010 of the Cerritos Municipal Code to modify the city council regular meeting schedule and to adopt the respective 2026 meeting schedule with proposed amendments listed in this agenda report.
Uh, if I may, Mayor Protem, there uh was also a recommendation to direct staff to bring a report back to the council uh with the resolution to amend policy 9.03, the agenda publication, posting and delivery policy. Um, if you are, it would like to add that.
Yes, please. That's my motion.
All right, let's vote.
The motion passes on a vote of three to two.
Thank you. I also have another motion to make. Um, if I may introduce to my colleagues to cancel the April 9 meeting of 2026 and to cancel any future meetings that fall on the day after a mayoral transition. Uh, this gives staff and council time, more time to prepare for the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Can you repeat that, please?
Uh huh. Basically, the motion is not to schedule any meetings on the Thursday after a mayoral transition.
Can can, I mean, I thought I thought the three of you just voted to move meetings to Mondays.
Oh, that's right. I am sorry. I I take back that motion. My apologies.
So is there still a motion?
There is no motion on the floor.
All right. Legislative items. City manager, do we have any legislative items?
No, sir, we have none, uh no items under 10A or 10B this evening.
Does the city manager have a report, item 11A?
None this evening, sir. Thank you.
City Council Communications, item 11B, Councilmember Say.
Thank you, Mayor. August 17 to 19, attending California J P I A, the newly elected official summit. And I really happy to attend, really learned a lot, hope be a good council person. And the August 20, I went to the California Contract City Association for Flashback 80s. August 23rd, attending the CCPA opening night, um official season. And the Boy Two Men, I tell you, that was the best. I went and my daughter both are really enjoying, so we end up buy more ticket for the coming event. And and just just realized that. And I and I think more people should go look the uh go to see the show that we have in CCPA. You will see the difference, you'll be proud of your CCPA. I mean, that's how I feel. After I left the room, I was so proud. I show off to my daughter and my kids, they're all fighting, they want to come to see the show. And then August 27, attending the G which is the uh GST open house. And August 28, attending City Artisia, State of the City. And August 28, I attending a CIP open house and ribbon cutting. And then August 28, I was attending through the Cerritos Air Disaster Moment of Remembrance. Thank you, that will be my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Hong.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I also attended almost um the almost same events all the time. Uh the most important, the first one is August 17 to 19 that I joined the California J P I A Newly Elected Official Summit. This is a great, great um uh summit for all the newly elected officials. And I think they give a lot of uh experience, you know, similar, and that is very beneficial. Not only how you become a good councilman, but also how you work with the city manager and how you work with our city staff. And this is very important because we have to work together for the best for our city. And that's very important. I hope in the future, everybody newly elected can all attend in this kind of meeting. And the secondly, the second one is the city CCPA opening night. Uh that is a great experience. And I think our director of the CCPA, Jeff, did a great job. It's a full house and everybody enjoyed the meeting, uh the concert and are very engaged. I haven't seen this kind of meeting uh concert for a long time. I'm also very excited. Thank you so much, Jeff. And if we have more of this kind of great entertainers to our city, I'm sure we can looking forward for a better, better turnaround for our CCPA. Thank you again. And also thanks for all your stuff, doing all the great job, representation, everything is beautiful and wonderful and I love it. Bottom line, that's it. And then um oh, we also went to the August 27, we go to the GST open house. And this is very important because GST is one of our top sales generating uh generating uh company. And it's so excited to see that they remodel their office and warehouse through our CDs, clerics and everybody's help. And they're very help, uh they're very happy about that. And we are also very glad to see the result. And I'm sure there is going to help their business to grow in the future. And we also looking forward that they can contribute back to our city more as one of our important enterprise um business in our city. So that's both way, you know, we help them and they they make more money and their business is good. Not only the sales um the sales tax generate uh for our sales tax. This is also a good thing that we can encourage them to give it back to our city as well. Like our mayor pretend us making the uh the the uh speech over there is they call G he called GST as uh uh sales tax, generating sales tax, okay? So people are going to remember this company. They're the company generate our sales tax. Thank you for GST and congratulation and looking forward to a better 40 years to come. And also um today, we joined the City of Artesia's State of the City um meeting. Um it's good, it's important because our neighbor city, we need to know what is their direction and how they're going to develop their city because we are, actually I call them our sister city because we're so close, right? We so um and the other one is um the ASCIP open house and the red ribbon cutting. Uh um I am so glad that they didn't turn that building, the empty building into such a state of the art building. And it's really proud of our city. And this is what I like to see, if we have more of this kind of big corporation and coming over and we um remodel the the office and make it like state of the art. This is gonna, people gonna, more enterprise and more company gonna willing to come over to Cerritos because this is um our image and this is really good for our city. And of course, um the uh before we come to the meeting, we go to the uh the air disaster moment of the remembrance uh for the Mexico airline crash that day, uh that month. So with that being said, that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Polito.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The events that I went to, pretty much the same ones that my colleagues went to also. Uh I do want to uh give um commendations to Jeff and the entire team over at the Cerritos Center for the Performing Arts on uh incredible uh opening night season uh for the season with Boys to Men. Yeah, it was just a great experience and a good sign of uh things to come. Uh I think the feedback uh from so many of the attendees was that they've been waiting to see this uh caliber and uh type of performances uh in Cerritos. Like a whole new generation of folks who uh are ready to spend their disposable income on entertainment of this type in this town. And so I'm excited about more programming like this uh going forward. Uh also, congratulations to uh GST on their open house. Uh what what a great event and what a great organization has been uh quite beneficial to the city um uh for their activity over the past several decades. So congratulations on the expansion of their facilities uh right in the Cerritos Industrial Park. Uh also, uh attended the City of Artesia State of the City. Uh very much enjoyed that, listen about all the great plans over in the City of Artesia. And I want to say thank you to Mr. Mayor for giving me the opportunity to present the city proclamation on behalf of himself and the the council members to uh ASCIP at their open house and ribbon cutting today, uh which is Alliance of Schools for Cooperative Insurance Programs. Um what a great uh organization that has been in this town for many years. Uh and to move right across the street uh from us here at City Hall uh to a very beautiful building as it's been described by my colleagues earlier. And then also, um I was honored to join in the solemn moment of recognizing uh the Cerritos Air Disaster uh which occurred back in 1986 uh this week. That's all I have to share tonight, Mr. Mayor, council colleagues, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Also attended many of the events that my colleagues did, and I want to thank each and every one of my colleagues. So proud of you guys are so active in the community and representing the community well. Um I did want to give a shout out again to CCPA and Jeff over there uh on the opening night of the season with Boys to Men. Uh they came out on Friday and Saturday and both performances were sold out. So that was a successful evening and thank you to the crew at the theater and also to our other simple, other city employees from other departments that um helped make that evening very special, including our public works are responsible for the beautiful, beautiful planners that are outside in the Garden Court area. So thank you. I'm going to forego the rest of my um uh events because I attended most of the same ones that my colleagues did. But I do have a consensus um request. Um so just background information, the city has currently a sister city designation policy that was updated on April 28, 22 and was signed by then Mayor Chung Vo. Um it states that the policy states that Cerritos-based community organizations organizations may seek City of Cerritos approval for the establishment of a sister city relationship. And in that policy, there are steps on how to proceed. So any designated 501(c)(3) um that is interested in establishing a sister city with the City of Cerritos may submit a letter of request by way of the city manager. And all applications will be reviewed by the city council and approved on a case by case basis. So with that, what I'd like to ask for consensus from my council colleagues is for the city manager to put out an announcement by the city via our various platforms to invite organizations that are interested in establishing a sister city program and to send their letter of request to the city manager's office. This is in court, this is in accordance with our current policy and that the city council's previous direction to have it come before the Economic Development Commission will come after the request has been approved by council. That's my request. I mean, my my consensus request.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert, if we could get that messaging out and invite our organizations.
Yes, I think you'll work with the team to get out information on our existing program and policy as soon as feasible.
Thank you. And when it's appropriate, Mr. Mayor, I I do have an adjournment whenever.
Okay, thank you. So um my request for cons, I have a request for consensus from my council colleagues. Where or are we, we want to have a safe city for our residents and for our businesses and for visitors to our city. So we have approved, this council has approved and budgeted for um automatic license plate readers throughout our city. We have auto, we have automatic license plate readers um on our deputy cars. And we have stationary alpers and we even have a mobile alper. One or, one or two mobile alpers. We have one mobile alper.
Currently have one, sir.
Thank you. So we have one mobile alper, multiple alpers on our deputy cars and multiple stationary alpers. And um the City of Artesia has 11 alpers through through their, throughout their city. So I would like to um direct uh the city manager and our community safety um office and our captain and our sheriff station. Um I would like to instruct, give them um city council direction to uh examine and investigate, uh working together with the City of Artesia to have a net, a combined network of alper cameras that we share the information in real time with each other to fight crime. So that our alper camera system in the City of Artesia, alper camera system with the city be given the City of Artesia's uh geographic location within our City of Cerritos. I think we should um uh have our city manager with our captain and with our community safety the safety office examine and investigate how to best combine that network of alper cameras that is growing with the City of Cerritos and City of Artesia to work together to fight crime.
I concur.
Thank you. And I am happy from the attendance and the feedback and the questions I got. Uh I had office hour with Cerritos Mayor Frank Aurelio Yokayama on Wednesday, August 20 at the Cerritos Senior Center. I had a um a table of residents who met with me at my office hour who uh wanted to be updated by the city and had and had questions that I was able to um answer and and point them in the right direction. And I was also pleased that by being there at the Cerritos Center, Senior Center, numerous residents spoke with me before my office hour and after my office hour to just to talk to the mayor and share things with me, ask me questions. So um I'm thankful to the senior center, hardworking senior center staff and to uh for um for helping and serving our residents and senior center patrons. And I'm thankful to the residents who engaged with me and uh communicated with me during my office hour at the Cerritos Senior Center on August 20. So I want to talk about residential burglaries and part one crime. So thank you to my council colleagues. We are, we are prioritizing keeping Cerritos safe. We are keeping Cerritos safe by being proactive and working together and prioritizing safety and funding public safety and fully funding our Cerritos Sheriff's Station. And for example, residential burglaries in Cerritos in January, there was 28 residential burglaries. And in February, there was 19 residential burglaries. And then this city council, the five of us became a city council in March. And in March, there was 12 residential burglaries. April, there was seven. May, there was eight. And June, it went back down to seven again. So since this city council became us five working together, we've had single digits residential burglaries every month in April, May and June. So let's keep working together and prioritizing the safety of our residents and the safety of our residents in their homes. And let's do everything we can to keep residential burglaries in single digits. Okay? And I'm getting this information, though, from safercerritos.com. And so I'm wondering why hasn't this information been updated since June? Are, I want to be transparent with our residents about crime in our city. And what I see from the year-to-date numbers in addition to residential burglaries going from 28 in January, 28 in January to April, May and June, seven, eight and seven. That's a year-to-date decline through June of, it's a 15, oh almost 16% year-to-date decline compared to last year. And looking at part one crimes, which are violent crimes and property crimes. And looking at part one crimes, which are violent crimes and property crimes, year-to-date through June, that's a 26.4% decline. So this city council, City Hall, and especially the deputies and Captain Strong have reduced part one crimes 2025 year-to-date compared to last year. Thank you, Captain Strong, you've reduced it 26.4% year-to-date compared to last year through June. But safercerritos.com was last updated on July 3. So it's been almost two months since it's been updated. Just pointing it out, I'm very curious as to what the residential burglary numbers were for in July, so we can know if we're doing a good job or if we have to work harder. Robert, why hasn't safercerritos.com been updated since July 3?
We will get the additional information update. I'm going to defer to Deputy City Manager, Mr. Carey, for additional information.
You're correct. As you may be aware, we've gone through a little bit of a transition, transition in our community safety operations. I was just going through my emails earlier this evening, and I have the reports for July. We'll be able to get those updated and on the website tomorrow, and we're almost to the end of August here, and we would expect to have the August reports for you early September. So we're on top of that now, and we'll get those posted for you as soon as we got them. But July will go up tomorrow.
Thank you. Captain Strong, part one crimes since June, through June of '25 have gone down 26.4%. Thank you for keeping Cerritos safe. What can you share with us today?
Sure, sir. In regards to your question about July's burglaries, there was six, six burglaries in July.
We went down.
Yes, sir, and then.
Seven, eight, seven, and then six. Thank you, city council members. Thank you.
Since we implemented the new programs that we've implemented to help burglaries, that was on November of 2024, burglaries have gone down 26.7% from 161 to 118 comparable year-to-date. And then in addition to that, and looking from June 1, 2025 to August 25, 2025, we've had 19 residential burglaries compared to 51 in the same period of time last year. That's a 62.7% decrease for that period of time. So when you put all the numbers together from when we first implemented the program to where we're at now, we're down 26.7%. But in the last couple of months, we've, we've actually been down even more, if you look at those numbers as well. So we're, we're going in the right direction as long as citizens keep doing what they're doing, walking around, keeping their eyes out, giving us a call if they see anything suspicious. Deputies are still patrolling the neighborhoods, and the numbers are going down, so everybody keep doing what you're doing, remain vigilant.
Thank you, Captain Strong, and July, you just updated the council, because this isn't on safercerritos.com, but it's going to be updated, right? Ryan, July, there were six residential burglaries.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Six.
Okay, I don't like, you know, we all, we all wish that it was less, but we're thankful that it's not more. So thank you to the deputies, the city council, thanks to deputies who are out there working hard to keep Cerritos safe, and you some, you, you did the work and kept, you suppressed residential burglaries these last couple of months of 2025 to get us to six in July. Thank you.
Yes, sir, the deputies did a fantastic job. I'll pass that message on to them.
Next on the agenda is item 12. City Attorney, will you please announce the closed session items?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. We will now recess into closed session to discuss three items on the closed session agenda, items 12A and B relating to conference with labor negotiators for the ASME Local 619, as well as Full Time Exempt, as well as 12C, which is an item of potential litigation under Government Code 54956.9D2 and E1.
Before we adjourn the regular meeting and recess to closed session, Mayor Protem Johnson.
Yes, I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting in the memory of Frank Christie Tierheimer. Chris was born on June 2, 1943. He went by the name Chris, so as not to be confused with his father, grandfather, and great-grandfather, who are all known as Frank. Chris grew up in Linwood, where he played shortstop on the Linwood High School baseball team. Out of high school, he started working a few different jobs before he ended up at Northrup. He started in the stockroom and worked his way up to assembly line as a riveter of airplane wings. Chris then went on to work for certified grocers, where he worked his way up to long-haul supervisor for almost, for approximately 30 years. Chris married Mary Ann and had three daughters, Susan, Michelle, and baby Mary Ann, who passed away at birth. Chris and Mary Ann have four grandchildren. After retirement, Chris and Mary Ann volunteered for the First Combat Engineering Battalion for several years. They participated in fundraisers, solicited donations, and assembled care packages for overseas Marines. Chris was an avid golfer and liked to travel with Mary Ann, and their favorite destination was Yosemite. That's what I'd like to, to adjourn in his memory. My condolences to the Tierheimer family.
Thank you for bringing that to the city council and adjourn, and adjourning the city council meeting as you reported. We will now adjourn the regular meeting, and the council will recess to closed session.